All right, I'd like to call the November 30th, 2020 Cituah School Committee meeting to order at 6:05. I'm just gonna read this and then we'll do a roll call vote. In response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency, and the related emergency executive order dated March 12, 2020, the town of Cituah Public meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting will be recorded and posted following the meeting. Public comment will be available via Zoom via the Raise Your Hand function. The chat function will be turned off. Community members can email me at p gates@cit.org with questions. So again, I'd like to call the meeting to order via roll call vote. Rand Leaning?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Lim Long?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everybody. We are, the school committee is in the Gates School. We are still considered remote, but we are here. Mr. Hayes is attending from home. He's lucky he didn't have to go out in this weather. It's pretty nasty out there. Thank you all for joining. We're going to kick off our meeting with student learning. We're gonna celebrate student learning. Hand it over to Mr. Steve Swett.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come this evening to share student successes. As you may know, we are charged by our Massachusetts history framework to prepare students to become thoughtful and active participants in a democratic society. I think you'll see some evidence of the progress we're making this evening. About a week ago, I asked teachers to find students who were interested in making 15 to 20 second videos sharing something that they found interesting or important in their history class. You're about to see the videos that they submitted. Many of them were done at home. Some are hard to hear. All of them show students who are proud of what they are doing. The video will last for about eight minutes, and after that, I would be happy to hear comments or answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
My name is Merrick James. I am a Team B 6th grade student in Mr. Paulier's Social Studies class. In class, we are studying human prehistory, which is the time before writing, and its years are approximately 2 MIA, which is 2 million years ago, to the time of when writing was invented, and 3,500 B.C., BCE.
Prehistory split up into three different eras, including the Paleolithic, Mesolithic, and Neolithic. Recently, we have been studying Ice Ages. At the end of the last Ice Age, our human ancestors started to create the world's first cultures, the way of life, that included customs, traditions, language, music, and dance.
I'm in the 6th grade. This year, we learned about problems. We should not judge people on their gender, race, or social status. We study this because we want to make it better in the future.
Hi, my name is Lexi Wylock, and I'm a student in 7th grade. This year, we learned about the movement theme of geography. I found it very interesting that each country can have many push or pull factors. And I also learned that return migration occurs when somebody leaves a country and then returns to it.
My name is Max. I'm a student in 7th grade. This year, we discussed required voting. I learned that voting should not be made mandatory because then voting does not become a right anymore. I think citizens should exercise their civil duties to vote, but also should not be forced to.
Hello, my name is Emma Cameron, and I'm in 7th grade. This year, in World Geo, we discussed Electoral Colleges. And this was very interesting to me because with the election coming up, I liked learning about it and seeing how it was going in real time.
My name is Kayla Vecchi. I'm a student in 7th grade. This year, we talked about human environmental interaction. I think that humans have a big impact on the environment because humans cause climate change. Climate change impacts the environment because it makes storms like Hurricane Doctor more powerful. It also impacts the air quality, much like the wildfires that are happening out to the west. I think this is important because we should know and learn about things that are happening around us.
My name is Cole Evans. I'm a student in 7th grade. This year, we discussed the Electoral College. I learned that how many electoral votes a state has is decided by how many representatives in the House it has, plus its two senators. For example, Massachusetts has nine representatives and two senators, equaling our 11 electoral votes.
Hi, my name is Mikey Kostnik, and I'm a student in 7th grade. This year, we talked about whether the voting age should be changed to 16 or not. I was surprised by this question because I didn't think many people would want to change it. I disagreed because when you're 16, you're not an adult, and your brain hasn't been fully developed. Thank you.
My name is Katie.
And I'm Jenny. And we're in Mr. Glass's 8th grade class. This year, we have discussed a lot of important topics involving race. We think one of the most interesting was how race is involved with the Constitutional Convention. Unfortunately, they decided that slaves will not be able to vote, but luckily today, everyone is treated equally, and everyone has the right to vote.
Hello, my name is Leon Breitenstein, and I'm in grade 8. Something interesting I've learned so far this year is about the Great Migration. This is important to me because it truly showed me how hard life is for people of color. With all the racial injustice going around, I think it's important to understand this issue that's been going on for many years.
Hi, my name is Beth McKeon, and I'm in Ms. Emerson's Honors History class. This year, we are learning about historical events and how they affected human rights. One example is during the Industrial Revolution unit, our class explored the women's suffrage movement, which was similar to the current Black Lives Matter movement. They both demanded and advocated for equal rights. Both movements fought problems in our government system like systemic racism and sexism.
Hello, I'm Emily Love, and I'm a sophomore this year at the high school. And something I learned in my history class this year was about how slavery was used in American colonization in the 1700s. And I believe this was an important topic to learn because it just showed us as a country how racism has changed over the years, as well as what society now still needs to accomplish in order for it to fully end.
History is a very important part of our learning as students because of the great impact that the past has on our future. We need to understand that slavery was a plaguing issue throughout all states of our country, not just the southern states, which I personally believed. It's very important that we all understand that together, we need to overcome this issue and work for equal rights for all people in our country.
Hi, my name is Molly Ryan, and I'm in 10th grade. In U.S. history, we have learned about slavery in New England and the harsh experiences of slaves. This topic is essential to learn about because it teaches us about the roots of racism in the United States and how systematic racism began. This also shows me how history can provide many explanations for the current issues our nation faces.
Hi, my name is Jason Frankel, and I am a junior. One thing we got to go over in our history class was about the election. It was very important and interesting that we got to go over it because it was very good to keep up with current events, especially when this election was a very important one.
My name is Brennan Delcandro. I'm a student in 11th grade. This year, we talked about the election and modern day politics. I'm glad we did this because I became more interested in the election and how the Electoral College works.
Hi, so I'm Rebecca Murray, and I'm in the 10th grade. This year, in international affairs, so far, we've been focusing on the causes and the effects of 9/11. And this is really interesting to learn about just because it's not really taught in depth in our normal history classes. So learning about it and actually being able to analyze the different perspectives and the different effects and impacts from it has been very interesting and is really engaging.
Hi, I'm Gina Senior at the Cituah High School, and the biggest takeaway I had from my international affairs class this year was detecting fake news and learning how it impacts the election process. It opened my eyes and specified how important it is today with reading the media and to not believe everything you see on the internet and to dig deeper into research.
And thanks so very much. Thanks so very much for watching. And tremendous thanks and appreciation for the students who made those wonderful little video clips. If anybody has a question or a comment, I'd be happy to hear that, but mostly, thanks.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Go ahead.
I'll just comment on how how much the kids seem to be learning. There's so much going on in the world right now, and everything is so relevant, and it's just so great that, you know, they get to be like active learners right now. And, you know, I wish I knew about the Electoral College when I was in high school. Thank you, Mr. Swett.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo what Ms. Lim Long said. I think we're living through history right now, and for at least the high school students to learn what's, you know, currently going on is really advantageous to everybody involved, and who knows, it might even set a career path for those that are interested in politics in the future. Thanks, Mr. Swett, and all the kids for putting that together. I know that they're on Zoom or on, you know, remotely enough and have to make another 15 or 20 second video. I think that was, shows how excited these kids are to learn. I want to show there, maybe the school committee and the superintendent, how that learning can even take place in this current pandemic. So thank you all very much, the kids and the teachers for doing that.
Thanks so much. Our pleasure.
Can I add something to?
Yes.
Just wanted to add too, it's really awesome to see the progression of the curriculum as it goes from a 6th graders developmentally accessing curriculum to progressively through a senior and how it's really, it's nice to see how they kind of, it all sort of incrementally ties together that, you know, step by step as they kind of deepen their learning. So that was nice to see that progression.
Yeah, that was something I was not expecting, and I couldn't have put it together to tell the story as effectively as each of those students did just by being who they were and doing what they do as a part of the program. So thank you for that.
Great, thank you again. All right, moving on with our agenda, the student reports. We have two of our students, Johnny Kinsey and Celia Reese with us. If you are here, actually, I see Johnny. I will ask you to unmute.
All right.
You can start when you're ready.
Okay, all right. So yeah, I'll go first then. So for Thanksgiving, the Anti-Racism Club is in the process of organizing resources to present to the student body about history, about the history of Native American culture in Massachusetts. Allies Not Bystanders put up posters celebrating Transgender Awareness Week from November 13th to 16th. And A&amp;B is an organization, or actually, A&amp;B is organizing a donation drive for homeless shelter, family aid in Boston, collecting household supplies for COVID safety. And that a group of, a group of parents working with engineering teacher Ralph Carrato are, actually, sorry. There's a group of parents working with engineering teacher Ralph Carrato, and he will sponsor a new robotics club. It'll be expanding this year to include a competitive component in the first robotics competitive. The team has awarded two grants toward the project for $3,000 in startup costs to register a rookie team, which includes kit parts, access to software, and support for the first organization. Students will start, students will start meeting this Wednesday. And finally, sports are, the fall season has ended for sports. Boys soccer advanced to the Patriot Cup semifinals with the 2-1 win over Hingham. Girls soccer advanced to semifinal win, or semifinals with the win over Whitman Hansen in the second round of the Patriot Cup. This is their first win over Whitman Hansen in nine years. And girls field hockey won over Hingham in the second round of the Patriot Cup. And as many of us know, these teams were unfortunately unable to finish their season, but a lot of great seasons throughout the fall. There were 26 Cituah High School Patriot League All-Stars for the fall season, and an additional 14 who won sportsmanship and scholar-athlete awards. And I'll pass it over to Celia.
All right. So last week before Thanksgiving break, the first term ended. Students typically have a lot of assessments in the weeks prior to the term end, but with a hybrid learning model, I've found that a lot of my peers have found it easier to manage tests and quizzes with projects and studying. And others who are struggling to find their group for them with the term ending a little too quickly have found that administration has done a good job helping them with being assured that even though this quarter may have not worked out so well, the rest of it will be easier to balance. Student Council is hosting a food, was hosting, I'm sorry, a food raffle before Thanksgiving, but it was extended in the weeks leading up to the holiday. For every item donated, students received one raffle ticket, one raffle ticket, and a chance to win a $50 Amazon gift card. It was a great way to spread positivity, and items will now be donated before the new year. The New Anti-Racism Club raised a kindness banner where students were able to sign the poster to show their support for generating kindness within the community, and it's going to be displayed in the school for both cohorts. A few weeks ago, the guidance offered a practice SAT exam for predominantly juniors and seniors online. A lot of students who took it felt it was a great practice tool because they had felt underprepared for the SATs because of missed practice time in the spring. The students who took it said they appreciated it as a more useful exam to practice than studying on their own. We started our first One Community Many Stories with series with Grace Tolson's short story, The Book of Life and Death. As I mentioned last time, we had almost 20 students, staff, and community members participate. In the next installment of One Community Many Stories, there will be a book about a Boston metro student. Our Principal Advisory Club had our first meeting, and we think it went well. Johnny and I were both there. We spent time brainstorming our mission statement, and students were voicing their opinions on ways to change the curriculum and the school culture and make an impact. We're planning to create a video in support of all the students visiting freshman home bases after the year to set goals for the second half of the year. And finally, our Drama Club is hosting a virtual play. It's going to be Clue on Friday at 6:30, which is very exciting. They've been really resourceful on figuring out how to show their talents, even though we're all hybrid. And that's that.
Great. Fantastic. I totally have Rosie Tersia also. Rosie, there?
Hi, yes. About it a little bit, but we have, so right now, we're doing a donation drive for sponsored families of family aid in Boston. So it's a homeless shelter, and they sponsor families who are in need of, especially right now in COVID, there's a really strong need for like sanitary products and personal hygiene products. So we're having students organize that, and that was a completely student-led effort. And we also have had, it was Transgender Awareness Week, November 13th to the 19th. So we had students put up posters about different transgender role models and educating yourself about language when discussing gender and other topics like that and recognition. And then we've also been doing with Thanksgiving, we had the Anti-Racism Club do some efforts to educate about Native American and Indigenous heritage in Massachusetts specifically, and also about how to recognize Thanksgiving and also recognize its cultural significance to other groups of people. So thoughts? Yep, Dave?
Thank you, all three. If I didn't know any better, I would have no idea that we were going through this pandemic. You all seem very positive, very outgoing, very, I don't know what the right word is, but it's I would have expected there to be a lot of negativity, I guess, in your tones and in your reports, but I feel like you're all saying things very positive, being proactive, and doing all things to support students and teachers throughout this pandemic. So I appreciate your efforts in continuing this learning process even in the current situation. I really enjoy hearing all these reports. Over to the committee, any questions or comments?
I'd just agree with you, Pete, wholeheartedly, and thank all three kids for their, for their work and their report.
All right. So students, thanks again for attending. Again, I do not feel obligated to remain on the line. You're more than welcome to, to see everything that's going on in the entire district, but we will not be insulted if you decide to sign off. So thank you again, and stay dry. All right, moving on to the agenda. Survey presentations. I'll hand over to Superintendent Burkhead.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. Tonight, we're going to continue our aim for the year in, in moving forward, I guess, of transparency and and good communication and involvement of our community with their voice. I think the principals did a lot of hard work with their instructional leadership teams and staffs to come up with some really strong surveys. The goal, getting feedback from students, staff, and families on the current hybrid model and the remote C model and everything in between. And so they've quickly turned that data around, looked at it with their staffs, included their staffs in the decision-making process, and they've come up with a presentation tonight to summarize the information they received from the three groups, and also included some action steps that we'll be applying to make things even better. And later on in the year, we'll come back with, we'll run the surveys again, and the goal is to see improvement in the areas that we need improvement and to continue to do the great things that we're doing very well. So I'm going to just reverse the order if I could this evening and ask that Dr. McGuire go first, then we'll go to the middle school, and then we'll go elementary last.
Good evening. Thanks for having us here tonight. I have the high school data. We were able to speak to faculty, parents, caregivers, and students from our faculty. The survey came at a time where they felt they were just getting into a routine with the schedule. So we're making steps in progress in that way, and they felt like our Wednesdays really gave us opportunity to connect with the students who need it most and to collaborate. The challenges in the model are that a half of our teachers want to improve student engagement and feel that there's a disconnect at times with the remote learners. And that is both when kids are remote in their, in their hybrid model and also our cohort C students. Another thing that came up is that 18% of teachers are meeting with 11 or more students during Wednesday. Excuse me, meaning that they're not meeting with a lot of students. And we've had some conversations about how to increase those numbers by meeting in small groups or putting course alikes together to be able to have more time with groups of kids because they are each meeting with a kind of a small number of kids. Although the depth of those meetings is, is very strong in the, in the coverage that they're getting, they're not able to meet with the numbers of kids that they're looking to that way. And they're looking at how to assess differently. How do you assess a student if they're not always in front of you? And that really takes, you know, you can see the breakdown of a combination of at-home, take-homes, tests given in school, or is it an assessment, or is it some other way to show your knowledge? Really, suggestions for improvement here are improving the Wednesday schedule and engaging with our kids. For families, a lot of positive feedback out for teachers. Expectations are clear. Teachers are working, working hard. But again, one of those topics, just like with teachers, is that Wednesday is a topic. Are our expectations too low? Is it too light? Are we in need of more instruction? Our Connect 10 is sometimes is inconsistent. I would say in a positive manner that a lot of our teachers are staying on longer than their requirement and interacting with kids who are both in the building and at home. But families, from their perspective, when students are remote, can become overwhelmed, distracted, or in need of more support. So how do we address that? Again, they're looking for the same thing as teachers with a more consistent schedule for Wednesdays, more opportunities for the typical high school experience, socialization and connections. And families did ask us to consider splitting our cohort days differently moving, moving down the line, and we are exploring that as well. For students, students felt like SHS was doing well, given what's going on. They feel comfortable navigating the school day, participating remotely. They're comfortable reaching out to teachers when necessary, and that Wednesday does help with the stress and time management and organization. Unfortunately, some of our grades from first quarter don't show that same picture, so we're working on that. But the challenges are what we anticipated, too much time on the computer, too much independent work. There are challenges with our cohort C students connecting, and we're working on that. And that time on Wednesday, they feel like it is positive time when they get it with teachers, but they want more of it. There are a number of students who feel like our protocols are, some feel they're too restrictive, some are too lax. But again, it's around that organization of the remote time, and it's around that Wednesday time. So we've looked at that with our next steps. We're going to move our H block on Wednesday, which is currently later in the morning to first thing, 8:15, to start off with a connection with a dedicated teacher that they have for all four years and to set the tone for the day. We're increasing and bumping up our interaction with students. We're going to start grade level online workspace and collaboration and extra help. And we've had a very successful academic mentoring program for students who are on the DNF list from the previous quarter. AMP has been around for a couple of years and was an H block intervention for those students, and it's a quarter-long commitment. We're going to start the Ramp program, the Remote Academic Mentoring Program, utilizing our paraprofessionals on Wednesdays to help with a bit of that executive functioning deficit that may be presenting in the remote model that hasn't been there before around the organization, the self-advocacy and the communication. We don't think it's about our students not being able to do the work. We think that we need a little bit of facilitation to organize and communicate that, that work back to teachers. And we're also beginning a partnering during the pandemic series with parents. The first one will be this Wednesday on hybrid and remote learning. January, we're going to talk about some of that supporting executive functioning challenges. In February, we have planned for vaping and marijuana usage will continue us throughout the year to be able to have those connections with parents around a year that's like no other and be able to support them to work with their students. Can I answer any questions?
I'm going to open up to the committee. Any questions or comments for Dr. McGuire? This one.
Thank you, Dr. McGuire. If the high school is considering mixing up the two cohorts, would you have to align that with the middle school? Because right now, you know, the middle, middle and high school are on that Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday schedule.
We've had those conversations, and we do think that alignment is good. I'm looking, I'm interested in finding out how many students that would impact if we made a change. We're hearing things like Tuesday is the new Friday for some kids, or if come January, can we flip the cohort? So B goes Monday and Tuesday. It just is a different experience for some families. The, the other side of that is childcare, and while I don't think our kids have babysitters, I think that sometimes they're doing the, the watching of younger siblings, and so to have those days line up might be more important. And that's definitely a factor. In a, in a perfect world, you know, they'd be in all four days, but whether it's Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, there are reasons to do that, but there are safety reasons to not do that as well. So really, our safety plan dictates some of that. But it came up enough to at least explore.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right. Is everyone able to see my screen? That was up great. All right, I'm already messing up. So I just want to go to present. So there are a lot of similar themes with the Gates surveys as there were with the high school surveys. Some background information, we administered our survey the middle of October to the end of October, which is essentially one month into kind of the model that we're in.
that we're in. We captured 412 parents and caregivers, 570 students, and 46 staff members. We're really happy with the feedback that we received and kind of the amount of feedback we received, because that allowed us to kind of say that we are kind of accurately representing all of the stakeholders that make up what we're calling today. We'll start with the student survey. There were a lot of strengths that were noted among all students. 90% of our students who took the survey said that they also, very similar to the high school, felt like they could navigate the remote day independently. 97% of our students said they understood the attendance expectations, and attendance expectations mean the daily attendance expectations in terms of checking in each morning for homeroom, but then also kind of with each individual teacher of kind of staying on or just doing the Connect 10. People feel our students felt like they got into a groove and understanding exactly what their teachers expected of them. And our teachers also agree with that. 65% of our students reported taking advantage of the enrichment block on Wednesdays that we offer between students and staff. And 82% of our students said they felt extremely or mostly safe with the safety protocols that we have in place. In terms of our challenges, 8% of students we learned are home alone, completely home alone. 32% of students, but those adults are working. So we recognize that many of our students don't have the same levels of support that they have when they are in school, and that allows us to say we need to make sure that we're planning appropriate learning experiences that students can do on their own. Many of our students indicated that they believe they are on the screen too much, and as a result, have a hard time focusing. Many, many of our students said that we are giving too much homework and too much classwork. When they're in the building, some students said that we do not offer enough mask breaks. Finally, some students reported that the technology glitches make remote learning challenging. And a big theme among many students was just an increased sense of anxiety and an increased sense of isolation, feeling like, what do we do? Who do we turn to when we are having trouble with not just academic work, but kind of everything going pandemic as well? So our students' surveys are very important. That's why we wanted to start with the student one. In terms of our families, very similar to the high school, many of our families, we appreciate the gratitude of parents and caregivers reaching out and saying thank you for the efforts that our staff, the efforts of our staff for working very, very hard. Parents are reporting that our students are happier than they were last spring. And parents finally reported that teachers, they see teachers are making changes to the way that they're teaching in this particular model, and they're happy to see that kind of adjustments are being made to how we're delivering instructions, what our academic expectations are, and being flexible when things aren't working. In terms of challenges that families reported, very similar to the high school, again, Wednesdays were a common theme in terms of some parents really said that our Wednesdays need more structure. Other parents said, please don't change the Wednesdays, because these are the days where our students can breathe and do their schoolwork. Some parents reported inconsistencies with Connect 10. Some, everybody was was remaining on for 10 minutes, but some classes were remaining on for the entire time. And so there was just kind of a disconnect there. There was some, there were some challenges identified with our cohort C in terms of being connected to their peers and being connected to the staff in the building. There were some inconsistencies reported with the use of Google Classroom and how we're communicating with families. And also kind of to mirror the student piece, many parents reported that students at Gates are getting too much homework. Finally, when we surveyed our staff, the staff identified the following as strengths of our model. They were happy that engagement has improved since last spring, that the students that were coming to the building were positive and happy to be here. One of the perks of this current model is smaller class sizes. We can provide more attention to students that are in front of us, either on the screen or in in person. And finally, staff really reported that this pandemic has forced them to use to use technology, to experiment with new technology, to master new technology, and they're really proud of their efforts in figuring out, how do I use the technology to enhance the learning in my class? In terms of the challenges, challenges that staff identified were the morale, the sustainability, and the mental health of staff. Staff craved more structure on Wednesdays to provide more support to students, and staff desired more connections and work completion from our students in Cohort C. So that's kind of just a big summary of the data. In terms of what we did to determine some action steps, is we did two things. The first thing we did was our Gates instructional leadership team, as well as our department heads, we took all of the data from all stakeholders, the students, the families, and the staff, and analyzed kind of big patterns, and what do we see as commonalities in each one, and what do we see kind of as outliers? We then hosted some think tanks with our school council and our staff to say, all right, here are the big concerns. What are things that we can put in place to target some of these areas in order to make it better for everyone that's involved? So our process was, you know, very inclusive of different stakeholders. We got good advice and good recommendation, and we have some action steps that we're going to be implementing in the current week moving forward with it. So I'm going to go over some of the big action steps that we're going to be implementing moving forward. The idea that that too few students are attending enrichment sessions with teachers to get extra help on Wednesdays, and students feeling an increased sense of anxiety about their schoolwork, we are going to structure our Wednesdays a little differently for those students that need extra help. Teams of teachers are going to be identifying and putting together schedules for students who need support or who are falling behind and just really don't necessarily know kind of how to prioritize or need assistance prioritizing. And they're going to be designing specific schedules for students, sharing those schedules with students on Tuesday, and sharing it with the parents, too, to say, at 9 o'clock, Joey's going to be meeting with Mrs. Smith to work on this particular piece. And we feel as though kind of targeting specifically students who are struggling to complete their works, struggling to engage, struggling to ask questions, and struggling to ask for help, is going to help those students to feel more confident. It's going to provide families with additional support that has been available, but the students need a little more support getting there. And we're eager to see kind of the impact that this has on their academic performance in the other days as well. Other challenge, also dealing with Wednesday, is what about those students who don't need extra help on Wednesday? And what we're doing is we're thinking about, you know, how do we enrich the experience of Wednesdays for those students who don't need that extra layer of support? And so what we're doing is our department heads are working together to design a webpage with some enrichment activities that teachers are going to be able to point students to, to say, you are caught up with your work, or you would do better by being challenged with this particular piece. And our webpage is coming along, and we have different pieces from each academic area that for students who have caught up with all of their work and who are looking to continue to kind of get enriched opportunities for learning, academic opportunities, we will have those available for students who do on Wednesday after they do their advisory and counseling classes that are mandatory for all students. Next piece is the parent and caregiver piece, parents requesting kind of more clarification and support, and how to support students when their students are at home, either fully remote or on their remote dates. We hosted our partnering during a pandemic session at the very beginning of November. We had over 40 families represented, and our school counselors, six, seven, and eight, really took the time to kind of break down each piece of our model, whether it be the schedule, whether it be how can you incorporate specific strategies that will help your student with executive functioning, with time management. The feedback we got was was wonderful. It also allowed an opportunity for parents to kind of share with each other, how has it been going for you at home? How has it been going for you while you're working and trying to support your student as well? So it really did provide for some good conversation. And we will be having additional ones this year to kind of continue that dialogue and give parents and caregivers the support that they need, because we know that we could not be doing this without the support of parents and caregivers. In terms of our cohort C, students feeling disconnected from staff and other students, and teachers wanting more time, we're going to be incorporating a 30-minute Cohort C meeting on Wednesdays for specifically students in Cohort C with their teachers. We think it's important to kind of build this into a schedule to provide kind of uninterrupted time for these students who are in the remote model to relate to one another, to have these informal conversations that sometimes happen at the very end of a class when Connect 10 is over, and it's just a teacher and students in a room. So we want to replicate that for our online students, because we know that the relationship building happens during these times, and we want to provide that for our students in Cohort C. In terms of staff stress, just to capture it again, staff report that this model is highly stressful. It is. Staff report they want more opportunities to share best practices with one another. One of the benefits of this model is that every single Wednesday in the afternoon, teachers have opportunities to sit down with their grade level colleagues, with their department colleagues, to talk about curriculum, to talk about teaching, to plan lessons. And what we're also going to do is we're going to start to infuse kind of informal topics that have been causing stress, things that, you know, people have figured out, but we don't necessarily have a venue for people to share. How are they kind of managing this, or what tips and tools have they incorporated into their prep? So we're going to incorporate this into some Wednesday time to give people the opportunity to brainstorm, problem solve, and recognize that they are not alone as they, you know, try to navigate this new world of teaching and learning. And so far, we've had one of them. It was very well attended. I think we had 12, 12 or so teachers there, and they produced notes that they were able to share out with the rest of the staff to get some good ideas for how to incorporate different things like attendance-taking, and communication, and technology. Finally, for homework and classwork, the idea that students and parents are reporting that there is too much homework and too much classwork, our department chairs who oversee the curriculum development have done a nice job each week going to our department planning time, and talking about, you know, kind of how are we adjusting? What is our data telling us? What are our students telling us? And what changes do we need to make? Where do we need to kind of prioritize this and kind of say it's okay for this year not to cover this particular piece? We want a rigorous experience, but we also know that we need to adjust based on the model that we have. And I think you will see and hear from students, from staff, and hopefully from families at this point, that we have seen adjustments over time. From the first week until right now, we are constantly saying, how can we get better? How can we improve this experience, hold students to high academic expectations, and make this work for everyone? So finally, as Superintendent Burkhead said, because this is our school goal, we are going to constantly be coming back to this and making more adjustments as time goes on. We value the feedback of everyone, of students, of staff, of families. And we do plan on doing administering, I think, two more surveys this year to continue to make changes to our model. So we thank you for the support and for kind of our students' work, our parents' support, our staff are doing incredible things. So at this point, if you have any questions, any ideas, any suggestions, I'd be very open to hearing them or answering them for you.
Pete had a question.
Mike, we'll open up. Okay, go ahead. Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, and thank you, Ryan, and Lisa. And I think that's a valuable tool, obviously, and very helpful for the schools and the administrators and staff, as well as for us. I had one question on the homework for both the high school and the middle school. What is the level of homework given this year as to say opposed to last year? Is it more? Is it less? The same?
That's a good question. And I think, I think one of the biggest things that we've learned from this feedback is we have made adjustments to kind of what we're assigning for work at home. And it's the remote days where students are reporting the most work. And when we have a model where you have a Connect 10 for 10 minutes, and then you have 50 more minutes in that particular class, what we're seeing is that in those 50 minutes, sometimes students don't do the work right then and right there, like following a regular schedule. And so they're kind of sometimes putting it off until the afternoon. And one of the recommendations that we're, you know, providing to students and to families is to kind of, as much as possible, follow a typical schedule. If you're just online doing the Connect 10 for 10 minutes with your English teacher, instead of waiting until 4 o'clock to read that chapter, you're given that 50 minutes in kind of remote class to get the work done. And so we've found that when students are completing the work in the given time period, it becomes a lot more manageable. So to answer your question, I think we're giving, from the information that we have, I think we're assigning less homework and more of just, here's the the work you're doing at home, which is essentially the same that you would be doing in school.
Okay, thank you. And do you think screen fatigue has a lot to do with that complaint?
I think it does. And I think that that's one thing that we are really trying to figure out, and our department heads are working really hard, of how do we, how do we help kids to learn what we're asking them to learn without being on a screen? And but if they're not on the screen, they can't access the teacher on their remote days. So we're looking at using different kind of resources. I know our phys ed classes, you know, are trying very hard to be tech-free, because they want kids outside, they want kids moving around. And I think we see this in different areas, too, in terms of not everything is on the screen, but we recognize that screen fatigue does lead to, you know, fatigue and exhaustion. So we are trying very hard to find as many kind of off-screen opportunities as we can.
Thank you.
And Mr. Beatty, on that, is it safe to say that in any environment, pandemic or not, that kids always think that they have too much homework?
You said that, not me. But yes, I think, I mean, it's really important, and I think our our team has done a really good job of listening this year to to students and to families. We want to do this right. We don't want to overwork people. We recognize that school is one component of kind of a really funky world right now. But I think, yes, it's often a complaint that we hear that it's too much work. And we're trying our hardest to maintain our expectations, and also teach work habits and honor kind of the system that we're in.
Great, thank you. Any other committee members? Questions, comments? Ms. Limwong?
Thank you, Mr. Beatty, for that presentation. I have a question about the Wednesday Cohort C meetings. In one of the, what you've uncovered was that the Cohort C students were, felt disconnected from their classmates. So would you consider opening that meeting up to students in Cohorts A and B, so it's not just the Cohort C students in the meeting?
I think that that's a really, it's a good idea and a good question. I think one of the things we talked about in our kind of instructional leadership group and at school council is kind of the Cohort C piece. They are, students who are in Cohort C are in our classes. We have one model, one remote model. So they're seeing peers in both Cohort A and Cohort B, and they kind of are, I think, saying that they want their own identity kind of as a cohort, and they don't have that kind of opportunity right now to, you know, just bond with the other kids that are completely remote with their teachers, like those kids who are in school have occasionally. So I think we're going to try it first as kind of exclusively, this the special Cohort C group with the teachers, that'll build that relationship. And, you know, from there, I feel like no one would ever be turned away if somebody wants to join that. And I think one of the, it's not a challenge, but what's different, I think, that you'll hear at the elementary level and the middle and the high school, is that we, we have people who transition from the remote model to the hybrid model like that. And so, you know, on one day, we may have, you know, 40 kids in our remote model, the next day, it might be 55. And so the community does change based upon the amount of people that are learning fully remote. So I think that special, unique bond that exists between those kids that are fully remote and have been fully remote, we want to honor that and kind of build that and establish that connection even more.
All right, great, thank you. It's interesting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Follow up to that, Mr. Beatty. I was aware that there were definitely a handful of folks who were moving between cohorts. Can you, can you just go over the timeframe for that? Are families able to transition, you know, one week and then go back the next week? Or, I know that we originally advertised about two weeks to transition, but what's the real data showing us that we're able to do?
Sure. Because we have just two models, we have the hybrid model, and we have the remote model, and all students are connecting with each other during the Connect 10. All students have the same teachers, all students have the same curriculum. All students have the same teachers. All students have the same curriculum. It is a seamless transition between the two models. And so typically, we are able to accommodate, you know, a change in a setting very quickly. I think we're very pleased that we have had many students who started fully remote kind of come back and say, we want to come back to the hybrid model. It's, it's the right time for us. It's the right time for our family. And we've been able to say, certainly, you know, we don't need to wait six weeks. We can welcome you back now. So it's, you know, we try to make it work for students as best as we can.
That's great, thank you. Any other members? Mr. Long?
Thank you. Sorry. Thank you for putting this presentation together. I do want to say, after last year seeing TMA in sixth grade, they would literally send a two or three-page email every Sunday night with everything that they were doing. And each team member would do it a different week. But having that as a parent and also as a student was a huge help. So putting that together, I think, will be a huge help for students and staff, I'm sorry, parents. And then some feedback I've heard just on the Wednesdays from kids is just, you know, my teacher's available for a two-hour span. You know, for those Wednesdays to come in and go, but they don't feel like there's a structure there so that if they come in, they can ask a question and then leave. But I mean, I know the younger kids, but just having that prodding of, oh, do you have a question on this math question? Or this topic? And having teachers kind of, you know, you don't want the teachers to tease it all out of them, but, you know, that's just some of the feedback that I've heard. You know, might make it a little bit more beneficial for students and staff on Wednesdays that happen.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And I think that's, we spoke about that last week of, you know, students show up. And these are not college students. These are sixth graders. And when they show up, sometimes they need that more than just, what do you need help with? They need the, let's, let's look at that quiz that you took earlier in the week. Or let's, you know, review some of the homework that we, that we did last night. So I think that that is definitely something that we have learned through this model. Because, you know, typically, we are with the students. They're in front of us. We know exactly what they need. This is kind of how do we better help kids in this particular piece? And I think that piece of feedback came out loud and clear in the parent survey, and we're appreciative of that feedback. And hopefully, you'll start to see we have sentence frames and things like that to help prod in a way that helps kids realize that these sessions are valuable, meaningful, and, you know, can be very helpful. And that way, when they're in college, they will, they will know exactly what to ask for when they get to college.
All right, great. Any other school committee members? Ms. Brandalini?
Mr. Beatty, I just want to say, I appreciate you addressing the need for some enrichment where, you know, knowing, obviously, all kids are struggling some level of this. I think it's, it's really great to see that you guys, staff and faculty, teachers, administrators, everybody has, you're really taking into consideration sort of, you know, the uniquenesses of each child and family's needs. And I think, you know, some kids are struggling with the, you know, as Dr. McGuire said, the executive functioning and the organization. And I think it's a nice year of trying to address all those issues. And then you have kids that are, you know, maybe they're flying through an assignment, and then they have that extra time on their remote days, and they need to be engaged further. So I know it's like millions of moving parts, so. But I just appreciate you all addressing that kind of massive spectrum of needs of all of our students. So it's good, great work over there, too. It's really got good stuff.
Well, thank you. We have the most amazing staff at Gate, so we're appreciative of your feedback and your support.
Great. And I would just echo again, I think that you guys are focusing on the one piece, this Wednesday piece, enrichment period. I'm not going to, you know, re-say everything else that comments already made. But I think that that's our real opportunity to, to make this even better model than it is. But I would agree with everything you said in terms of challenges and the opportunities that exist on that Wednesday schedule. So keep out. You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
All right. So the elementary school next, I just want to let those that are listening here aware that I will open up the public comment after the elementary presentation. Just so we can get any comments or, I guess, questions heard at that point. So I will open up to comments after the elementary presentation. So with that, I will hand it over to the elementary principals.
Tracy, if you want to start? I didn't know I was starting. I thought it was ending, sorry. But I can start. So just like Ryan and Lisa talked about, we also did a survey. And we took all of our survey results, Julie, Donna, Rebecca, and I, and we looked at them as a whole, just from an elementary point of view. And then we each took our own school's results and we teased them out. And we analyzed those results with our instructional leadership teams and our staffs. And then from there, we came back together, the four of us, and we put together this presentation. We pulled out like the main threads that went through all four schools. I do not know why I cannot move this. Oh, there we go.
There it is.
So we had this, the strength of a team is an individual member, and the strength of each member is the team.
So we started with looking at the student survey results. We decided that we would survey the students in grades two through five. And as Tracy already indicated, we tried to pull out the data that was for all of our schools. Later in the week, we'll be sharing out information for individual schools to our communities. But we first wanted to do an overview of all of the schools. And as you can see, just from these quick charts, that the student feedback that we received is a reflection of pretty close to equal amounts across the, all of the schools, as well as grade levels. Thank you. If you can go one more. Thank you very much. Some of the feedback that we received from kids, we asked, we wanted to know, do they know how to find their assignments in links for Zoom? When this all first started, we're very well aware that kids in second grade to fifth grade, some of this was very difficult for families. We really needed to help them transition with helping the kids get onto Zoom. And as we're progressing through this new, this new model, we want to make sure that we're making progress with that. That more kids are becoming more independent with finding their own assignments and that they're also able to get themselves on Zoom. We have tried multiple different types of organizational tools just so that we can make sure all of that information is in one place and that kids can access it themselves. Especially because, as you saw in Ryan's data, a lot of parents are working while kids are at home during this piece of learning. We also wanted to make sure that we had, everybody was learning to use Google Classroom. Google Classroom from some grades was new last year. And we needed to do a lot of educating around that tool itself. But as you can see, that's definitely turned into a success for us. And kids do know how to use Google Classroom, and it is being used across the board at this point. Also, feeling connected, we understand the social emotional aspect of this model is so, so important. So we want to make sure kids are feeling connected in their grades. And as you can see, although we're thrilled to see that the majority say, yes, they feel connected, we do have some that still do not. And that will be taken into account when we're working on our action steps, sharing our action steps across the four schools, but also when we are talking in our own community. We also asked for student feedback, which is always interesting from grades two to five. So one, we wanted to make sure that kids felt like they had access to their teacher if they're at home and have a question. And the answers that we pulled out, although they may not all be the same exact wording, they were all pretty much close to each other. So we got a lot of things like, my mom contacts her. I message her through Google Classroom. I can speak to her when I'm on Zoom. We also asked about Connect 10. What did kids think about Connect 10? Did they feel comfortable with Connect 10? And the overall feedback was that they enjoyed seeing each other as friends. I know I can often speak, I can speak to walking through classrooms in the morning on a Monday and a Friday, especially, when kids are up on the screen and talking with their classmates within the, in the classroom. And all of the students who responded, most said that it's best on Wednesdays. Wednesdays is the day that all children are on a remote. So all of the kids are doing the same Connect 10 from home. And I'm sure that equals the playing field and makes everybody even more comfortable. We did also hear that it is glitchy, so it's not always as easy just to jump on if they have internet issues at home or if there is something that's happening at school that makes it hard for the teacher to get on. Although it's a priority, they did say that they found sometimes it is glitchy. We also asked, is there anything that you need to make learning easier in our new model? Majority said no. Of course, there's the famous one, less homework. Everybody seems to think that. More social time? More Zoom at home? No math? We, no masks is what that actually should say. A lot of kids asked for no masks, which obviously we know is not an option, but kids, kids are great. I, I personally never have to say to someone, put your mask on. But I do know that most kids just don't want them. And what is your favorite part of the day that is different than last year? We wanted to know, obviously, the kids are living through a different model, and we wanted to know, what do they like about it? And they all mentioned, they certainly do like having more attention from the teacher. Small class sizes came up. We have very small class sizes right now at the elementary school. Outdoor snack time. There is more teaching outside going on than there ever has been before, for obvious reasons. And the kids really like that outside time. They like that they're home, spending more time with their family. A lot of children reported being, enjoying being with their families. And again, they're kids. They enjoy the shorter days.
Great. Thanks, Julie. So then we went, we went and we actually did surveys for, from our families and caregivers. We had a couple of surveys. We had one survey that was directed at our remote families where the children are fully remote. And we had ones in the hybrid, a survey for the ones that are in the hybrid model. So as you can see with the family and caregiver feedback, this just kind of gives you a breakdown of, you know, how many respondents we had. We were very fortunate. We received 573 responses from families on the hybrid model feedback. So we're really pleased with the, the response. And, and you also have the grade level breakdown. Interestingly enough, we really received a lot of feedback, the largest numbers, from our early childhood grades one and two. And you'll see as we move forward that a lot of the feedback we received is very focused on K to two. You know, then the next one, Julie? And we just also had it broken down, is the overall communication clear and concise, allowing students to meet the learning expectations? We were pleased that the majority, you know, there was a majority that said yes to this response. But, you know, again, there is that sometimes a no. And we have taken the data by school level, and we're kind of teasing that out at the, at the building levels to see where else we can help and support. And as principals, we'll still continue to work with our instructional leadership teams and among ourselves to try to find if there are any other trends that we need to be media aware of across the four elementary schools. And then again, it was just for our information, we wanted to know, you know, how many of the children who were responding, what the percentages were for kids who are in 504s or IEPs. On the next slide, you'll just see that workload, again, majority said it's just enough. And then we have a mixture of, you know, about the same, equal amount of too much or too little as far as perspective is concerned. But again, it's a place where we're going to need to do some additional work. We want everything to be just enough, but children, you know, depending on the topics, the knowledge, skills that are being taught, there's a, and how parents are also seeing this. It's a matter of perspective, but we want to know more about why is it too little or too much? And families really did a great job of responding and providing us with some examples in our raw data about some of the examples, you know, of what is too much, too little. They are, on Wednesday, direct instructions. We were, we were happy to see that in the majority of families believe that the Zoom, Google Meets, any of the direct instructions that is happening remotely is very, very helpful. And again, you know, you look at that not helpful, and we're looking at more of where do we say that? And identify, how can we help and just support on that one? So overall, majorities of families in the elementary model want students to return to school full day in person. That is developmentally appropriate, and we certainly understand why that would be the case. Parents, especially for students, parents of students who are in K to two. It is really a very difficult, step very difficult for the, to balance the in-person and the remote portion because our K to two students do not, they're not independent. And they require a lot of guidance and, and help. And that's not always easy to be able to support within the home. So we did get a lot of feedback on that. And they just, you know, overall, across all four elementary schools, the, you know, the leading trend is that in-person instruction just works better for the age group that we are working with in the elementary schools. Families felt very safe about the procedures and protocols that we have in place at school that supports the safety and well-being of our students. And that families were really positive about the connections that children have made in the relationship they've built with their teachers and with their peers, both in the remote learning aspect as well as in person. And a big benefit across all of the grade levels, depending on the grade level, there's agendas, there's daily assignment postings, there's checklists. Those have all been proven very beneficial, not only for the students, but it does help parents to have a, an outline for the day of what the expectations are going to be, or for the week, for that matter. Very, students are really comfortable with the platforms of Google Classroom. We got a lot of positive feedback because it really streamlines the work and helps to keep everybody organized. And again, we, we did get feedback about the K to two students being on Zoom and also using some of our online learning supporting apps. It can be difficult for them to get online. It might be difficult for them to be able to access Launchpad to get into their apps. So that's also a consistent challenge, which really goes into, again, the fact that our students in K to two lack independence and really need to be guided through that. The next one, Tracy, please, thanks. We talked, we took the survey from our remote family and caregivers. Again, we, we got very similar responses in regards to whether the workload, how the workload was. Well, as I said, with the hybrid model, this is where we really need to tease out a little bit more. There were some changes that occurred in our, you know, in our remote model with staffing and with expectations. So that's all been teased out. We've worked that through. We are happy that the communication and the learning expectations is, is good. But we, I think, we still have some work to do in that area. Direct instruction, majority, they, they really felt that the direct instruction sessions were really good. That they're really being very, very helpful for the students, and we're pleased. I mean, it's not a perfect system because you do have children who are on the screen for a long time for direct instructions. But our, our staff is doing a great job, both, not just our teachers of remote, fully remote, but our teachers in general have done an excellent job in the remote teaching and, and the support as well as the in-person. So we were happy for this, that we saw this. Pros. Remote families really appreciate the work that our educators are putting into this new model. Again, they really enjoy, they really appreciate the agendas and the checklists that they're being very, very helpful. They like the fact that we are consistently using Google Classroom and that, you know, once you've gotten over the learning curve of that, there's a comfort level. And if everybody knows where to go to be able to access assignments or to be able to get to a class. And there is the cons of the inconsistency with the internet. Some things we just can't control. Some things we just can't control, but it is Situate. And oftentimes like tonight, when you have the high winds, you just never know if your internet's going to stay or not. They do want some more direct instruction. And that really is teacher, you know, it's the face-to-face teacher interaction in the virtual platform and having access to teachers all day long. And that is, the fact that we don't have that in the hybrid model was also something that was mentioned that, you know, because of the hybrid model, the cohort A and B, as well as how the cohort C day is broken up to, sometimes you don't have access to the teachers as easily as if you would for a full day, in a full day in-person experience. So that is some of the feedback that we, we did receive for cohort C as well. Okay, I think you're doing the staff Tracy for us.
I, I am, yes, thanks Donna and Julie, thank you. So we also surveyed the staff in our buildings. And again, like, like we did with the other information, we looked at this overall across all four elementaries, but then we also broke it up into our own individual schools. So this information is sort of the trends from all four elementaries. So we asked the staff, what is working well? And we got a lot of great feedback on agendas, using grids, using checklists. The online platforms that we're using and curriculum sites are all going very well. Google Classroom, Hegarty, which is a phonics-based program that our kindergarten and first grades are using. Mystery Science, which is being used K to five. Zern, Embark and Symphony, that's our new math program, also being used K to five. Those are all going very, very well. And that has been a, a big help, especially in the remote part of the day. Having kids in person is very, very beneficial. And 85% of our teachers reported having the materials they need for the hybrid model. So I think, you know, we're, we're very fortunate in Situate and at the elementary level to be seeing our students four days a week in person. And our staff is super appreciative of that. But as one of the challenges that comes out of that is we only have those kids for two and a half hours face-to-face. And that feels very, very rushed. And so, you know, the, the teachers understand and, and the kids understand that the rest of the day is still part of the, of the school day. But for the youngest kids, that is really hard for them. So when they leave the school, a lot of them do think, oh, my day is done. Like I only do a half day, the rest of the day is just open. And so just, you know, that's one of the challenges the teachers faces. Getting kids to understand that when they leave, like our morning group, they go home and they have their lunch. And then, but there is an expectation to work in the afternoon. But without face-to-face, direct instruction from teachers, that's very challenging. And that goes along with that time on learning. Like there's this feeling with the staff at the elementary level that you've just got to do as much as you can in this 2.5 hours. Because once they go for the other part of the day, even though you have assignments for them and you have expectations and you have things for them to do, it's hard. It's hard on them, they're not independent mostly. Obviously, our fourth and fifth graders are a little bit more independent, but our youngest ones are really not. And, and it's very hard on our families. We did hear that, and I know Donna just went over that, but we did hear that from our families about how challenging it is to be home, especially if a family is working, parents that are working remotely. But then also to also be a full-time teacher for their younger children. Another challenge that our staff talked about is the extended absences. So where Ryan and Lisa talked about how seamless it is to go from remote to hybrid because they do have the synchronous teaching at the secondary level. We do not have that at the elementary level. So when we have children that are quarantined, they, they can access the remote part of the day. And the teachers are certainly providing work for that, even that hybrid time of the day that they're missing. But without the synchronous part of the day, when kids are out, they aren't getting the direct instruction from teachers, except for on that Wednesday morning. And that's challenging, you know, from, from the student's point of view, but also from a, a staff's point of view. Of course, the, just the current, all the restrictions that we're working under goes really against every best practice that we know. And that, you know, that is still coming up as a challenge for teachers to, still just trying to change their mindset that, you know, you, you can't do what you used to be able to do. It's, it's a different year and, and as much as we know that and we're living it, we still keep trying to, to teach and want to teach the way we did before COVID. A lot, you know, it, as much as we, the learning platforms are going very well, it's a lot, it's a lot to manage. So just like a lot of technology at once, still just trying to navigate it all. And then another challenge is just, just not having enough direct instruction time with kids. So we also asked the staff about the success and challenges of the Connect 10. This is a little different at the elementary level. It's not quite as successful. We did hear the Wednesdays is the most successful time and that is a full remote day. So the whole class meets on Wednesday morning, including our cohort C remote kids. That goes the best and we do get the best attendance out of that time. We do run into technology issues in the building, especially on the days when teachers are all working from the buildings. When everybody tries to get on at nine o'clock and that whole, that morning time, we do run into technology issues then. The Connect 10 is, we're finding it to be more successful in the, in grades three to five and not so much in grades K to two. And I really, really just think that it's just not as developmentally appropriate for kindergarten, first and second graders. And it's interesting, when you talk to teachers, you talk to them from K to fifth grade and ask about it, you can almost see like the developmental appropriateness of it. Where in kindergarten, there's really not a lot of Connect 10 going on at all. They're, they're just, you're just not able to build relationships remotely. It's just too difficult for that age. Same in first grade, you can see a little bit more in grades three. Can kind of start seeing those bonds develop and the teachers are like, hmm, some of it, it goes well for some, but not so well for others. Now, when you get up to fourth and fifth grade, you know, you can see that the kids are connecting more and they're having much more success. But then also keep in mind, a lot of those fourth and fifth graders have been together since kindergarten. So even their remote friends who are not in school with them, they've known them, you know, for several years, maybe even four or five years. So they've already sort of, they have a bond already. Things that are successful during Connect 10 times are doing mindfulness activities, read alouds, open circle works the best. They do open circle on Wednesday mornings. Those types of activities have been successful during that time. And then we did talk about action steps. So again, I say each building has their own specific action steps, just based on their own data. But that we definitely had some similarities. And we, we came together, the four administrators came together and just talked about what are some similarities that we have across all four buildings. So we talked about creating a list of at-risk students to provide support and intervention as appropriate. And, and when we say at-risk, this could be a variety of reasons. Kids that, that are struggling to meet, to make effective progress academically because of our model or even socially and emotionally, or, you know, making connections socially. So we talked about sort of collecting those students' names and then providing specific interventions to them. We also talked about doing parent education, very similar to what Ryan and Lisa talked about. Being very purposeful in our newsletters on specific topics that can help support families at home. And then also offering some trainings and support nighttime activities. We talked about creating focused paraprofessional schedules for our Wednesdays. Our Wednesday afternoon, when teachers are planning and students are at home, remote learning. We talked about utilizing our paraprofessionals in a more specific way to help support kids and almost do like check-ins with them. We're hoping that by transitioning to Google Suite with that upgrade and transitioning from Zoom to Google meets, that may help with the connectivity issues that we've heard from families and from teachers. We're working on each school, their instructional leadership teams are working to develop creative ways to foster more meaningful Connect 10 opportunities. And we did, like you heard from Donna, we did hear a need to want to be back in full, the full person learning. So we heard that from families, did also hear that from staff. So the four of us have started to look at analyzing the possibility of a full, of a return to full in-person learning at the elementary level. So we've started to work out and talk about the logistics of that. We're in the very beginning phases and, you know, we understand there are many, many, you know, things that have to fall into place. But we, we feel like it's important to at least start that conversation.
And before you go into questions, thanks Tracy. I just wanted to, to say that in, embedded in all of these surveys, and it's something that we didn't, we only briefly mentioned, we couldn't do what we've been doing with our students without the partnership of our families. Our families, our families have become the extended classroom for us. And we saw it in the, in the staff feedback and in the family feedbacks that there's such a great deep appreciation for both sides of the story of, of what's happening in the classroom. And, and how much that, as difficult as this has been, I think the, the bonds that we've created with our families and the program that we have continued to move forward and to morph and to change is really due to the fact that we get such honest, open communication from our staff, from our families and from our students. So, you know, this is, this has been hard, but we appreciate the fact that the communities really come together so that we can try to continue to provide the best that we possibly can under these very difficult circumstances.
And just to follow up to what Donna said, when you just think of the developmental piece of this, you know, our, our, our youngest learners are pre-K, K one, two, three. There is not independence with learning at home. And any, any parent on this, on this meeting that has those little ones, you understand that. Like there's, you cannot assign these children work to do without an adult there sitting there, teaching them and helping them. So, you know, parents have, have really had a crash course in being a teacher. And, you know, our, our, our teachers rely heavily on the parent support, especially in those much younger grades. Any questions we can answer on the elementary survey?
I'll open up to the committee, just want to first comment, that was obviously a very in-depth, well-reported on survey result. We really appreciate it. I know there's a lot of work that you guys are doing every day, but to take this on and, and prepare and present it to us, it really, we really appreciate it. I think that ultimately, your last item was, you're, you're beginning to look at a potential return to, you know, in, more in-person learning, I'm sure that will generate most of the discussion. But I will open up to the committee right now to see if they have any questions or comments. Anyone here? Pete, Miss Lynn Blom.
I just wanted to, you know, thank you for that in-depth report on the surveys. And I don't think there was any surprises. You know, for the majority of families, it's, it's going okay and the kids are doing okay. But there are that, you know, the, either, either end, there's the families that need a lot of help and some kids that don't need any help at all. But in the same with the teachers, you know, in, I also just want to, again, praise that, all the hard work that's been going into the hybrid model on, across all schools. But again, no surprises with the survey, but thank you very much.
Anyone else, school committee, Mr. Hayes?
Well, I'd just agree with Pete, you and Janice as to how amazing it is, how hard everyone is working, whether it's teach parents. I mean, it's just an unbelievable time and, but I want to emphasize how hard I know all the teachers are working and how much I appreciate it. And, you know, it'd be interesting to, to see where we go. I mean, as far as, when things may start to change. I doubt they'll change this year, but I'm hopeful they might, but we'll, we'll see. Just all-time education does.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you again, I also just wanted to comment that it's really nice to see the coordination amongst the elementary principals. I guess it's not often that we see the coordination, so it's really nice that, it's very apparent that all four of you are working closely together, all towards the same goal. So I just wanted to, to mention that. So thank you again for reporting, working together and providing us the results.
Thank you.
Now though, is, I know the agenda doesn't offer the option for public, since we just received so much information, I'd like to open it up to public comment, if that's okay. Yeah, it will just be on the, the, the survey presentation and anything that we discussed prior to then. We will still have public comment as stated in the agenda. Two other opportunities, this is just for now, since we just received so much information, I'm assuming there may be a few comments. Again, try to keep it to a comment, if there are questions and I deem it appropriate, I will open it up to one of the principals to respond, and if they're able to, they can. So if you do have a question, please use the emoji and raise your hand and I will ask you to unmute. And I'll need people to help me see those hands. All right, here we go, wow. Jennifer O'Neill. We lost you Jen. Cannot hear you. You're in and out.
Okay, you know what, I'll, I'll just text my question, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, so my question is, is on the high school survey. They're talking about moving H block from 11 to 8:15. That would mean doing away with any type of late start that our high school has always had on Wednesdays. I'm not sure if Lisa's still there, but has there been any thought of trying to keep it to a bit of a late start? Maybe instead of 8:15, which is the normal start time for the day, moving it to 9:15, which would be the late start Wednesday time to give our high school kids that late start that they've always had on Wednesdays?
Jen, we all know who you are, but could you say your name and address if you're comfortable in doing so?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, for, for Genie, yes. Jennifer O'Neill, I have a senior at Situate High School and Gannett Road if Genie needs that too.
Okay, and I think Dr. McGuire has, has left the meeting. Is there anyone that could help answer that, Mr. Burkhead?
Mr. Beatty would be the one to default to, if he doesn't have the answer, I can give it a stab and then certainly write it down and make sure that we get back to, get the response back from this Dr. McGuire, when we're able to. Ryan, is that something that you, you've been involved with as part of the discussions?
So Dr. McGuire and I talked about kind of just schedules. And I think the idea behind moving the H block to the start of the day is it does frame kind of that Wednesdays have a purpose. We start off at a very specific time and from there, it's, you know, that academic advisor that Dr. McGuire was talking about has the ability to say, okay, Johnny, you are spending the morning doing X, Y, and Z. And Billy, you are now going to do X, Y, and Z. So where it falls right now in the late afternoon, the connection piece, the connection is there, but kind of the helping students to prioritize and give them direction. It, it's felt that it's better suited in the morning.
Right, so I understand that piece of it, but our high school is always, I mean, not always, but for the last several years, our high school has had a late start on Wednesdays. So this will mean no more late start. Are we now starting down the path to get rid of late start altogether? I mean, I fully anticipate that there will be a day in this 2020, 21 school year that our students will be back in school full-time. And I want to be sure that late start Wednesdays is still something our high school students can look forward to.
I, I don't think there's any hidden agenda. I, I don't think there's any hidden agenda to get rid of it. I think it's just using the survey feedback of kids need more direction and clarity in the Wednesdays. And so providing that kind of, to kind of give them direction during the day, earlier the, the better. And it's, it's the regular start time, but I don't think there's any hidden agenda to get rid of the late start.
Okay. I'll still email Dr. McGuire, not that I don't love your answer, but I, I just want to be sure that, you know, we're, we're giving our students at, at least some sense of, you know, what normal we can, and if late start is 9:15 on a Wednesday versus 8:15, that would be great. So thank you so much for taking my question, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Robin Glaser. You're next.
All right, I unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Address if you're comfortable.
Okay. Robin Glaser, 26 Persimmon Drive. I have a, a high school student. So I am, just want to confirm, well, first of all, thank you very much to all of the principals. All of this information I have found very helpful and the visual aids are really helpful to digest all of the information. So my question is, will the visual aids be posted where parents who were not able to attend today can still go and access that information after this evening?
Yes, thank you. It's a great question. Absolutely. So within the next week or two, all families and students that fill out the survey will have access to all of this information. Anticipating tonight, that will be the first sharing of this information, but then each school will be sending out specifically to their families, more detailed breakdown and, and follow-up with any questions you may have as families and students. So the answer is yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Ash?
Yeah, hi. Tom Ash, we have a second grader at Cushing. We live on Lawson Terrace. Curious, first of all, with respect to the, the, I guess, study, the, the, looking into, going back to full person, full in-person learning, I guess, as the parent of a student in Cohort C, what happens to Cohort C in those circumstances? Also, as it concerns Cohort C, the, the, the talking point about deploying paraprofessionals on Wednesday afternoons, what kind of access to paraprofessionals will Cohort C students have? And also, what's the impact, you know, what's the impact overall in all of this? You know, there, there are Cohort C students whose teachers would, would be pulled into other in-person responsibilities. So, you know, what hap, what happens to that group of kids? It doesn't seem to be evident in any of this.
Okay. I'll just, I'm going to ask one of the principals to respond to that, if you're comfortable. You're supposed to be okay with responding to that?
Yeah, sure. I, I'm happy to do that. In regards to the, if we were to go back in person, I believe that just like with the hybrid model, children who would be in the remote model would remain in the remote model unless, you know, individual family wanted to transition their children, and that we would take it on a case-by-case basis. But we don't have any, when, in trying to return children to in-person learning, I believe that we still have the choice of whether it's hybrid or in-person. So to answer your question, Mr. Asher Ho, I think that the children who are in Cohort C, should that be decided that you want to have those children remain in Cohort C, that we would continue with how we're doing it now. So our remote teachers would continue to teach remotely, just, just as they are right now. Our in-person model would look a little different and we would have to play with the schedules a little bit, but that would be what the change is for right now. That's what we're looking toward. In regards to deploying our paraprofessionals, can you provide, Mr. Ash, with a little more clarification? Are you just talking about the Wednesdays when we deploy them to help support and assist children? I just wanted a little more, a little more clarification on it.
Sorry, took me a second to unmute.
That's okay.
The question is, it seems to be something that's, that's designed with Cohorts A and B in mind and not necessarily Cohort C. So the question is, what kind of access would Cohorts D, Cohort C students have to paraprofessionals? Would this come at their expense? And what, just what's, what kind of thinking is going into that?
Right. No, that is going to be open to all children, regardless of what cohort you're in. What we started off with, we, you know, and I can speak to the Cushing model, each of our buildings did a little bit different based on our staffing, but what we're looking at is we're looking at what kids, obviously our IEP services need to be covered, whether remote or in-person, but then what times are available and where can we help to provide interventions and support and enrichment to, to children? And it's really a matter of having discussions with teachers, having discussions with families and seeing how we can possibly link a child up. For example, if you have a child who is being, needs a little extra reading support, and obviously, you know, you want to provide as much as you put, you have the direct instruction, your tier-one instruction, but then you're going to go in and you want to get that tier-two, tier-three instruction for that child. We would link a child, whether it's a child in Ms. Chesky and Mrs. Phillips' room in Cohort C, or whether it was a child who might be in, you know, Mrs. Coughlin's class in the in-person, those children could be actually pulled into a small group together to get the same interventions and support by a paraprofessional regardless of where they're at. So the nice thing about this, using our paraprofessionals, is we can pull children from anywhere and everywhere without fear of cross-contamination and provide them with the academic supports that they may need. So it wouldn't be at the, it wouldn't be at the expense of, of any child. If anything, what we're trying to do is we're trying to provide more support and enrichment in a more foundational, you know, academic and emotional, so social supports that we can. So it will really depend on, and again, our reading specialists are very involved in that, our math specialists are very involved in that, as well as our special education teachers and our general education teachers. They're, they're the ones who are deciding based on the data that we have about our students.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Moffitt.
You're welcome.
Melena Davidova.
Yes, hi. I'm at 142 Country Way. I have a middle schooler and a high schooler. Yes, I just want to echo the comment of Jennifer O'Neely, O'Neil, sorry, about the Wednesdays concern, the start time for high schoolers checking in. My kids are fully remote and my child actually appreciates the flexibility for Wednesdays. It's something to look forward to. And as I understand it, is similar to how it was before all this in terms of late starts. So I would hate for that to disappear for our high schoolers. I do appreciate the structure that's planned by Mr. Beatty for the middle schoolers. My child will greatly benefit from a scheduled meeting when necessary with the teachers. So thank you for everybody who's been working so hard in all this. And I also wanted to comment, I did check all my emails, I have no record, I don't know where this survey was sent out in what email, but I can't seem to locate it, and my daughter also has never received a survey, or either of my children have received the survey. So if you could let me know where this was sent, if it was in some sort of a email with a hyperlink, I don't, I don't know. I'm just confused, so thank you.
Well, Superintendent Burke, can we look into the, to make sure that her email addresses are the group?
Yes, thank you. I've already contacted Mr. Beatty here and Dr. McGuire will make sure that you have a copy and we'll figure out what happened. And we'll also, you know, anyone that didn't get the survey, I think it's worth mentioning now, please let us know, let your building principal know. And if there's a technology snafu, we missed your email, got the wrong one, or you just didn't find it, we'd be happy to resend it out to you and allow you the opportunity to fill that out, because the more information we get, the better. So we'd be happy to do that.
Great, thank you. Next up is, I have the Folly family.
Hello, this is Emily Folly. I live on Lawson Road. I have a kindergartner and a second grader at Cushing. I just wanted to register my support and enthusiasm and relief that there is movement towards in-person full-time learning for the elementary school level. I have two younger children at home and while I'm fortunate not to be balancing a full-time job in addition to those four children, the remote piece is enormously overwhelming for myself and for my second grader. My kindergartner is never in a bad mood and can handle everything fine, but I just wanted to say thank you for your efforts and the movement and not be satisfied with complacency despite our challenges that we're faced. So thank you, and I wanted to register my support of that movement.
Great, thank you very much. Richard Taft.
Hi, Richard Taft. I have a student at the high school on Brook Street, and my question is, it seems to me that the consensus among all the schools and principals is that Wednesday isn't, is certainly as productive as the in-person days. And so what I'd like to know is what's preventing any kind of rotating cohort, full, you know, where they, students go in, in-person on Wednesdays instead of having whatever, in case the high school was 10 or 11 kids going in on Wednesdays. And the other thing I'd like to know is, is how far behind are we, given that school was closed last year and we're in hybrid? There doesn't seem to be any metric for that. If anybody could answer that, that would be great. Thank you.
I'm going to, I'm going to have Superintendent Burkhead address that for you.
Sure, thank you Chairman Gates, and thank you for the question, Mr. Taft. Just to, later on in the presentation today, we'll be talking about our health update and we'll be leading into, but I'll, I'll jump to the chase on the back-to-school and the Wednesday possibility. We're reconvening our 60-plus member Safe and Strong Task Force. First week of January, we'll have our meeting and we'll be discussing all this data, what our health metrics are, the metrics we use to move to hybrid or not, the current Safe and Strong Plan, and establishing that group with the thought process of our plan to bring every student back. The simple version is the green model, which we have in place, which would be, we would re-return to three feet and everyone would come back in person every single day. Also, keeping in mind the remote student needs and allowing that as an option. It's easier said than done, obviously, and so having those meetings will allow us those conversations, like the question you had, Mr. Taft, and, and others have had, is there a possibility within the hybrid of moving to Wednesdays in person? And I'm sure that will be on the table at that time. So yes, that has been brought up to us, it's, it's certainly an option, and there could be a phase in, as we've heard tonight, the, because of the independence and the need happens to be, you know, higher, if you will, at the elementary, especially the lower grades, maybe that process of returning is a phased-in approach where we start with the elementary and we move in. So all of those things are on the table, but we do want to do it the right way, like we did with this reopening plan. We want to involve several voices and re-energize that task force, so that's in the plans, and so all of these things will be on the table. And so we'll be looking forward to input on that, and this survey data is a good jumpstart to, start to make those decisions.
Great. Thank you very much. All right, that's going to end the public comment session right now. There will be two other opportunities as we move forward on the agenda. I appreciate the questions and comment at this point, and hopefully that, that worked out well for, we have a lot of items to, to cover tonight. So moving forward is the high school winter sports update from our athletic director, Mr. Umbriana.
Let me just get this up and running here. All right, good evening, school committee, thank you for having me on tonight to present. Just going to kind of go over a, what we have right now for information on winter sports so far. I will go into a little bit about the success that we did have about fall sports. Special shout-out to both Johnny Kinsley and Celia Reese, who both did a great job, already pretty much updating this whole slide right here, and both are winter athletes, Celia is a swimmer and Johnny a basketball player. So thank you to them. Just kind of a breakdown of how successful the fall was. It was a very unique fall, more than anything, but, you know, we definitely want to highlight the positives with so much going on. And as you can see, our, our overall record of varsity programs that were allowed to go off in the fall, 43, 20, and 3, which is pretty incredible. We were league champs in boys golf, field hockey, boys soccer, and girls soccer. Boys golf did win the Patriot League Cup for the first time ever. It was our league tournament and they beat Hingham, which was awesome. Our both boys and girls soccer teams were undefeated this season. Girls, as Johnny mentioned, beat Whitman Hansen for the first time in nine years, which was very, very impressive. Our girls volleyball team, who actually had, you know, competed all year long, hadn't won a game yet, the first round of the Patriot Cup Tournament, they did upset Marsfield in that first round, so that was pretty exciting. Our cross-country runners performed well in the Patriot League Championship Meet. Two of our girls cross-country runners, Stella Spalding and Cleo Belber, both finished second and third, and one on the boys' side finished fourth overall in the championship meet, and that was Kellen Doyle. So shout-out to them, you know, for a great, a great run there at the meet. And then we were, it was excited to get football and cheer. Obviously, we lost them, you know, to have a fall season, but it was exciting to get them out there and practice a couple of days a week, you know, a, as a group again, which was awesome to see. Just a shout-out, as Johnny said, here's a breakdown of our 26 Patriot League All-Stars for this fall. So congrats to all 26 athletes, it's well, well-deserved. All right, so our winter sports update, as official, as of the week before Thanksgiving, our official start date now for winter sports is scheduled to kick off on December 14th. It was originally scheduled actually for today, and that got pushed back two weeks, which will allow for us to better prepare, you know, for all the different modifications and regulations that have been thrown at us. The end date, official end date is February 21st. That won't change, that will stay the same no matter what. We do have, still have some logistics that we need to be worked out, and we are working hard this week and next week to, to get those all squared away before tryouts begin. So the winter sports offerings, as you can see, basketball, ice hockey, gymnastics, and swimming, we're all given the green light to go. Wrestling, indoor track, and winter cheerleading were not. We will dip into those three in a little bit. And as of right now, skiing is currently to be determined. We have a couple of meetings to work out some logistics if we can there. So I just wanted to break down kind of the step-by-step process that it takes in order to approve these winter sports, and it's a pretty extensive step-by-step process, but I think with the fall, as we saw, there are so many questions that come out of, why is this sport allowed versus why is this sport allowed? So I think this is just a, a, a great breakdown of what steps it needs to go to in order to get that green light versus the red light. So it all starts out with the EEA guidelines. When they get presented to us, you know, they usually label, you know, what sports can safely be run, you know, using three levels of risk, low, moderate, and high, and what steps those sports need to take to, you know, get that green light of, you know, eventually. And I put the link in there for anybody that does want to check it out there. Step two, after the EEA guidelines do come out, each sport for the winter has its own separate sport committee that is made up of principals, assistant principals, athletic directors, head of officials, et cetera, for that one sport. And they really essentially create modifications based off of what the EEA guidelines come out with. Step three, that, once they create those modifications, it now jumps to the Sports Medicine Committee, which is made up of principals, ADs, superintendents, usually a school committee member of one of the district schools, seven to 10 certified physicians, athletic trainers, and epidemiologists. So that's an extensive sports committee group, medicine. And then, you know, they'll either approve or not approve modifications. If they don't approve modifications... If they don't approve modifications, they send that back to the sport committee and the sport committee has 24 hours to update any of those recommendations. And if they cannot update them with the, you know, modifications sent by the Sports Medicine Committee, that sport will not be given the green light to go off. So, you know, that's a big step that it has to pass and as you can see with the seven to 10 physicians, athletic trainers, epidemiologists, I mean, they're, they're experts in that. Once it does pass the Sports Medicine Committee, it then goes to the MIA Task Force, you know, led by MIA President and Superintendent, Mr. Jeff Granatino. And that's also meta, you know, made up of a lot of different and important figures as well. They determine modifications and guidelines and then they will present that to the MIA Board of Directors for final approval. Step five, once it gets to the MIA Board of Directors, this happened two weeks ago on Friday, which is made of 21 total members. As you can see, they met on Friday, November 20th, you know, to vote on all the modifications and regulations that have been presented to them. This is really kind of the final major step with sports being approved or not. And then from there, it's really up to the school districts and local Board of Health of what can go off safely and what can't. You know, so I know they'll all, we'll all work together, you know, to, to see what, what we can and can't do. And I know every school district's obviously in a different situation. So, couple winter modifications as well, the movement of a few sports, as you saw, those three initial sports were given the red light. Indoor track has actually been moved to the fall two season, that wedge season that begins on February 25th. That was more so because of the Reggie Lewis Center that we run out of and that a lot of teams run out of, is not even opening until January 1st at least. So, we moved that sport to the fall two season. Wrestling has been moved to the spring season and winter cheerleading will now be moved to the spring season as well. And the fall cheer will go to that fall too. So, cheer in general has moved to the two different fall two and spring seasons. As far as spectators are concerned right now, and this is usually voted on, you know, we're, we're given guidelines from the EEA and then, you know, as a league in ADs and in principals, we've all voted together on, you know, do we want to make those more stringent or not? As of right now, and these could change, as we saw in the fall, these could change weekly, but as of right now, gymnastics and swimming, there will be no spectators allowed for either of those sports in competition. Ice hockey, as of right now, we, we kind of voted to leave it up to the rink. A lot of rinks have different policies right now. We are working with the rinks that we do play at to, to figure out a game plan for that and what it's going to look like. As of right now, it's probably going to be two adult spectators per player. And Chairman Gates, I'm sure we can make an exemption, exception for, you know, situat hockey's number one super fan if we get to that point.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Yeah, and then at basketball, as of right now, again, this could change. Home spectators only, two adult spectators per player and they must be family. And obviously, we will make exceptions case by case for larger families, but we, we are working as well on the live streaming of the games that we can, both hockey and basketball and potentially swim as well and gymnastics if we can, to get, you know, the live streaming where parents and families can watch that from their home. These are, you know, this will be posted on the website tomorrow morning, but these are just the four different sports and the different modifications per sport. As you can see, there's many, many six, seven pages of modifications per sport similar to what we saw in the fall. So, feel free to go on the MIA website and check out those modifications. They're pretty, pretty substantial at this point. Just similar to the fall, this is, these are the steps that need to be taken in order to participate in a winter sport. You know, family ID, everyone must be registered, physicals must be up to date, baseline testing for freshmen and juniors. This has been the big one. I think a lot of people have gotten confused as to how that baseline and impact and concussion testing is going to look. Codes will actually get sent to the athlete's school email once they do register. So, have your student athlete look at their school email because it will come upon registration. Final thoughts, just to kind of hammer home as we end this, we are not working alone. I am working weekly now with the 11 other schools in our league in their ADs, you know, essentially on a daily basis and, but we do meet once a week, you know, and just kind of, just to ensure that every decision that is made, you know, is based on the health and safety of everyone involved. All the practice and game schedules and what they're going to look like should be finalized by the end of this week, if not, you know, beginning of next week. But I expect a similar number of games will be played in the format will look very similar to the fall with a league tournament at the end of it. Every fall varsity program outside of cross-country, which is usually lower number of meets anyway, we're able to get double-digit games in the fall. So, that was awesome to see. Listening to the experts, you know, every decision that has been made for fall and winter sports, you know, have gone as, as you can see through those multiple steps, you know, through the approval of Board of Health, licensed physicians, doctors, nurses, epidemiologists. So, these are experts who, you know, a lot of them are parents as well and a lot of them, you know, want the best for our safety of our kids. So, I don't think they would be approving a lot of these sports if they didn't feel like it, we could run them in a safe manner. And then obviously, I'm very confident in our situat squad here and I saw that with the fall, they were outstanding, you know, between Superintendent Burkhead and, you know, the administration team, school committee members, nurses, the list goes on, custodial staff coaches. I'm, you know, I'm very, very confident even this winter, you know, that we will be able to keep our kids safe and healthy through winter sports. And just my, this was my favorite quote that I heard from a student during tryouts in the fall season. Yes, masks have to be worn and yes, everything is different, but I get to go out there and play the sport I love with my best friends and I think that's the most important focal point here, you know, and having to break the news to both our field hockey and girls soccer team that they weren't able to finish their season and seeing the tears come down. You know that this fall season meant a lot for a lot of those athletes, especially our seniors. So, we're really hoping we can get through with the winter season and, and give our kids a chance to, to get back out onto the courts and the ice again. And just one final really big thank you, you know, as, you know, to everybody that's helped out and really helped out this fall season, making it as successful as it was. And, you know, again, school committee, all you guys, Superintendent Burkhead, all the nurses, Kelly Roach, Drew Shealy, and the Board of Health, they were fantastic. You know, I have to give a shout-out to Erica Brady and the bus drivers for, you know, getting our kids to and from events and doing it safely. Our custodial staff was awesome. Big shout-out to Situate TV, who was actually at a lot of our fall events and filmed a lot of our games, which was something that we didn't have last year. So, that was outstanding. You know, to all of our amazing coaches, parents, guardians, families, you know, for following the rules. I know it wasn't easy, but they did a great job, you know, policing that. Our boosters, you know, I give them a big shout-out for, you know, getting through and getting our senior nights in this fall. Every program was able to have a senior night, which was something that the spring season missed out on. So, I was, I give them a lot of credit. Our athletic trainer, Chris Alves, who did an outstanding job on keeping our kids in the game safe. You know, Kevin Devon, the Recreation Department for their work helping us out with the fields. And of course, our biggest one is our student athletes. They were just absolutely phenomenal as far as, you know, participating in athletics, but make, you know, it's not easy to run around with a mask on and, and they just did a great job following, following direction and, you know, getting as far as they did this fall season. And then as always, any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself, Michelle Patterson, my secretary. And for any updates on the winter season and further, follow us on Twitter and we will get those out.
Great, thanks very much, Mr. Umbra. That was a very informative detail, wanting to appreciate all the information. I have to state, I'm following some of the Situate Athletics and some others on Twitter and there is a lot of good information out there. But you did a great job of summarizing and providing all that to us, so I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I think I've said this to you on many occasions, you started, I don't know, a year and a half ago maybe, and you were tasked with, with playing sports without any fields and now, now you're welcomed by a pandemic. So, you haven't really had an opportunity to just have a straightforward season, so we appreciate learning on the job.
Thank you.
But it's very informative, very helpful and all the feedback I've received has been very positive, so we appreciate that. I'm going to go up to the committee, any questions or comments for Athletic Director?
I had one quick question for him, Pete.
Go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Pete, I'm sure it'll be in those links that you gave, which, and which I'll look at tomorrow, but I did have a quick question for basketball and hockey. What do the teams do during halftime or between periods?
So, good question. So, actually in basketball, they eliminated halftime this winter season, so we will not be having halftime. Quarters will remain the same at eight minutes. They will do a two-and-a-half-minute break in between each quarter, which will work as a mask break and, you know, a chance for us to sanitize all the basketballs and rotate in for new, brand-new balls. But there will be no halftime for basketball and for hockey. There's going to be areas, but they're not opening up locker rooms for this winter season. So, kids are going to be expected to show up in, in uniform like the old-school Mighty Might days and have their skates on and there'll be a larger area where teams can go and throw the skates on, but it'll be on the ice, off the ice. And I think that's kind of the whole direction of this winter season is it's going to be come in, play the sport we love, and then out you go type of thing. So, you won't see the typical pre-game, you won't see the typical post-game that we're used to, and you definitely won't see the typical halftime.
Okay, thank you.
Not a problem.
Thanks, enjoy your hard work, Pete.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, I just have a.
Ms. Lamb.
I just have a comment and a question that I think I'm starting to feel the same anxiety as a parent of a winter student athlete that maybe the parents of the fall student athletes. It's very, you don't realize it until it's upon you that it's, you know, will they get to play? Will they get to, you know, at least, even if it's abbreviated? You know, there's a lot of anxiety for parents around that because they just want their kids to get out there and do what they love to do. But my question is about the baseline impact test. The students will get the link, is that something that they will do at home on their own computer?
Yeah, that is correct. So, they'll get the link sent to them upon registering on family ID and they'll be able to do that from home this year, which is different for everybody. So, it's kind of a learning process. It was a learning process to fall and we're hoping it be a little bit more smooth this winter, but yeah, they will be able to do it from home.
Okay, and then those results will go right to you?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Not a problem.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? All right, great job again, Mr. Umbra, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully we get to a hockey game, we'll see.
Let's do it.
All right, here we go. One everyone's been waiting for. Dr. Dutch and the budget calendar for 2022. Dr. Dutch.
Wanted to share with you the budget process and the calendar. There's a lot of narrative in this document, but I wanted to focus on the dates and what would be happening during those times and then answer any questions that you may have about the process itself. As you look at the, the calendar itself, please note that the, the goal is to make this an inclusive process where as many people as possible and as practical have an opportunity for input and it is truly collaborative within the district. So, with that said, near November 2nd, the budget forms and guidelines were sent to principals and department heads. We had a very brief discussion regarding those guidelines during a district leadership team meeting with the principals and the department heads. So, they've had those documents for a little, little less than a month and the requests are due in to me on Wednesday of this week. And thankfully, I've already gotten a couple of those requests, so thank you for those who've gotten them in early. I will then meet with the superintendent and the principals and department heads to review their requests, focusing on those things that are significant increases or decreases, whether that's staffing or materials, to identify rationale for that with the goal being that we have a cohesive district-wide plan for curriculum and spending around that Then during the month of December, the superintendent will develop his budget request with the collaboration of all of the parties involved, focusing on, again, priorities within the district as identified in the goals that have been set by the school committee for the district and the superintendent for himself, which is also based on the district goals. The finance subcommittee would then in January, review a preliminary budget with an understanding of, of those materials. January 27th would be further discussion of the budget by the finance subcommittee. And then on February 6th would be a school committee budget workshop, which would be the first real opportunity for the entire committee to see the full budget and to have some discussion at that point. The superintendent will then have a budget update with principals and supervisors to explain where we are in the, in the process as well as an understanding of their requests. The school committee would then have a public hearing, which is an opportunity for the public to have input on the budget and the priorities and where spending is being focused. On February 23rd, the school committee budget would be presented to the selectmen for their review. On the 25th, the approved school committee budget would be presented to the advisory for their review. And then on March 1st, the school committee would vote to approve their budget. April 12th, it would go to town meeting, hopefully for a unanimous approval. And then we begin to implement that, that budget on July 1st, 2021. So, I would be happy to answer any questions and then ultimately look for a vote to approve the budget calendar for FY '22.
Great, thank you very much, Dr. Dutch. Open up to the committee, any questions or comments for Dr. Dutch?
I had one quick question.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Hayes.
Bob, maybe it's just my COVID memory, but can you talk about the finance subcommittee, who they are and what, what their function is?
The finance subcommittee is two members and I believe it is you and Mr. Gates.
Okay.
The role of the committee is to stay apprised of where we are in the budget process, both in, in developing the FY '22 budget, but also getting periodic updates as to where we are in the current budget as far as spending and then providing that information back to the school committee with my assistance.
Okay, great. I just don't, is that something that into the calendar?
No, that wouldn't be in this calendar because those meetings are not regularly scheduled. They're, they're on an as-needed basis, probably.
Yeah.
Four to six times a year.
Okay, great, thank you.
We actually are planning to have one in mid-December to give you an update on where we are in the current budget.
Great. Yeah, I think, Mr. Hayes, it's one, I think one change from what we've experienced in the past, it just gives us a little bit of, you know, more updated information more often, I guess, than.
No, I think that's great, yeah.
So, I think that will work out well. Any other comments or questions from the committee? If not, I would enter a motion actually to vote on this.
Actually, I have a quick question, Peter. How often has the financial forecast committee met so far? Do you know how many meetings they plan on having Dr. Dutch over the next couple of months?
They meet, I think, at least monthly. I know that they've had one meeting that Superintendent Burkhead and I were at. There's another one, I believe, this week. There isn't anything on the agenda. Uh, there isn't anything on the agenda related to the schools. So that they do, they do meet um at least monthly.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've had two meetings recently, Mike.
Yeah, both of those meetings were focused on town meeting warrants.
Yeah.
Uh, if no one, if there are no other comments or questions, I would enter a motion.
I move to approve the FY22 budget calendar as presented.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hayes. Uh, roll call vote, Renalini.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Yes.
Gates, yes. Hayes?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for your reminder. That's helpful.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is the memorial policy review. Uh, Superintendent Burkhead.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Gates. Uh, so we've had a request from a um family member of two Situate alum, two brothers that uh graduated Situate High School, played football. In both passed away this past spring, six weeks apart. The family is inquiring about um setting up for their, the gentleman's mom. It was their, I guess, intention to do something for her in their memory. And they are requesting a, because both boys played football and their sister was a cheerleader, that they would have a bench, a memorial bench placed somewhere near the um athletic field. Um, so that's the request. I put, included the um memorials policy for your purview, uh, and also just put this on as a discussion item for tonight, and we'll be able to share any specific details about the request. If you want to move towards that for a vote at the follow-up meeting.
So, um, yeah, I'll open up to the committee for questions or comments. Ms. Brea, uh, sorry, Ms. Lindblom.
Um, is this the memorial for the, the boys or the mom?
It's a great question. It's for the boys. The mom's still alive, and they, yeah, they wanted to do something for her on, obviously and for her, but in memory of the two young men that passed away.
And the, uh, so I, I think it's important for us as a committee um to review our policy. We do, we have policies on everything. Um, I think that all, we always wonder why we have so many policies, but oftentimes we have to deal with situations that require us, require us to, to um refer to these. So in your packet, there's a uh copy of policy FFA, Frank Frank A. Memorials. Um, does everyone have that? Okay, um, so I think as a committee, we need to read and interpret, uh, determine whether or not we should you know, or what types of discussion we need to have regarding this and other potential memorials. It's, it's a difficult one, in my opinion, because we want to honor the family. We don't want to make it difficult for them to try and do something commemorative and, and positive. Um, but I think that there's a policy for a reason, and as a school committee, we need to determine whether or not you know, we want to move forward with, with a vote to support this or need more information or kind of what our next steps would be. I think that in, in my memory, we've had two uh memorial-type recognitions. One was as a result of building this very school that we're in, uh, there was a field that was named after the prior athletic director, uh, and as a result, uh, because that was no longer available, we renamed the gym in honor of that um family member. Um, I believe we also, um, just as an act of courtesy, when they redid our uh football field, um, we, they did rename a bench. Uh, I guess, I think it's the veterans memorial bench, something to that effect. We didn't necessarily have a vote on that. That was a decision by the town. Uh, they just informed us um of that and just asked for our support in their ask. So as we look at this and other memorials, we'll need to come up with a solution or direction that we want to go. Um, again, I think it's a challenging one because the family's trying to do something nice. We don't want to turn folks away, but I think that we have to consider what other requests we may have um in the future. And if we satisfy one, are we able to satisfy everyone? So I'd ask for some discussion on this at this point. If you have any questions or comments, I think it will be helpful. Ms. Lindblom.
Uh, I think it's interesting in the policy that it states that um grief experts don't recommend memorials. I mean, we have, there's a, there's the, we have quite a few around the high school. And I'm curious as to when this policy was last updated, if they still feel that way.
We, um, there should be an updated, and we can check to see when this memorial was last updated, when this policy was last updated. I think the other, the other thing that, you know, is always a difficult discussion is in-school versus outside of school. Um, this memorial is being asked to be put out on the um, on the new athletic complex, and the discussion is, do, do we have control over the athletic complex or is that a town? Uh, and then who maintains it? So I think, I ultimately think this discussion is going to come back to that very thing. Do we have authority to approve memorials outside of school or not? Um, and I don't think that, I don't, I don't know if we have a great precedent on that. And I'm just hearing now that this policy was last updated in 2016. So again, I, I think that, I ultimately think that this discussion is going to come back to, do we have authority to place memorials outside of a school building where we don't necessarily maintain or control the fields or anything outside of our school? I think it's always a point, I want to say controversy, just a, just a point of, um, I don't know, procedure or nobody, yeah. So I think ultimately we do have to determine, do we have the authority to establish any types of any memorials or other outside of the school building? And if we do, would we um want memorial such as this to be established? So what would help the committee come to some sort of conclusion? Do you want to, I mean, not sure how long we want this to go on for. We probably need to let the family know at some point the direction that we're going. I mean, do you think that we need to review the policy? Get the policy subcommittee?
I, looking at it, you know, it's, it doesn't say that we can't do it. It just says that it can't be done without the approval of the committee. So if find it appropriate.
But that says in a school facility.
In an experience, yeah, not necessarily.
Because we don't have your, generally, it's generally understood that, that we don't have, that we don't have control over.
School grounds isn't considered, I know, like technically
Yeah.
in Situate, school.
But we're just inside the bricks. Yeah. I mean, would you approve the, the driveway for Mr. Gibbons?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
But again, that wasn't, that wasn't one that was already in existence, and it was gone because they got rid of the school. So we moved it here. It wasn't a new one. Same with the Svensson gym. So there are definitely exceptions, but there were, there were reasons to that. Um, and again, I, I, the family or any family that's even asking us to do this is just trying to do something good, and I don't think we want to be in a position to say, no, you can't do this. But the question is, you know, is it appropriate according to our memorial policy? Um, and or do we need to review our memorial policy? Or, you know, do we go, do we, do we go to the town and say, this is your, you know, this is under your jurisdiction since we don't control the school grounds?
Right.
Well, Pete.
Mr. Hayes?
I don't think we can pass a buck to the town on this. I mean, I think if, if the school committee uh discussed with the town that we wanted to place a memorial on the athletic complex or in any part of school grounds, I, I'd be very hard pressed to believe that the, uh, that the selectman would disagree. But I think it's probably worth some discussion with them, certainly. Um, my other thought is, um, we, if we want to amend our, our memorial policy, we need to resolve this issue before we amend the, the policy. And um just as a point, um, the outdoor soccer field, uh, the grass field, uh, has, had been previously uh, well over 10 years ago, been, was named for the gentleman that built it uh, in his spare time. And I know I had asked before, uh, with the rec department in, in various presentations that they had the marker, uh, and I hadn't had a chance to look if that had been replaced. I didn't know if Bill or, or Peter knew about that, knew if that had been accomplished yet. Pete is still here. Pete is still on?
I do not know the answer to that, Mr. Hayes is. Pete Ombriano is still on?
No. So, I mean, I, I'm open for discussion. I, I don't necessarily have an opinion on it. I think, you know, again, I can't say it enough, this family just wants to do something nice for their family members, and I don't want to make it difficult for them. My only concern really is that we're setting a precedent, and I don't think necessarily we'll get inundated, but we could get several requests for similar. And if, if we say yes to this one, then we're basically saying yes to everybody, which, again, is not a terrible problem, but it's something that we just need to be aware of.
I think that's the biggest thing, Peter. And in the past, we've typically turned away from uh, setting memorials up around the schools just because of that, that reason. I mean, you don't want to disenfranchise an individual person, but at the same time, we can't have a thousand memorials outside because, you know, if we do one, we have to do more. If we are going to do something along those lines, we should look at a different avenue of, you know, creating some kind of, if families want to recognize uh, their children or their athletes, whatever the case may be, we, we find a different avenue to do that and not, you know, name every bench or every, you know, yard mark or whatever the case may be, because it, we just can't do it.
Can you, actually, I can, yeah. I'll do it. Or you can raise a hand. Can you raise a hand?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, so, um, so I, I am not aware of, um, what, uh, you had mentioned, uh, Mr. Hayes.
Oh, well, ma, many years ago, Pete, that field was built by a town worker who had children go through Situate High School, and he built that uh sock, outs door. Now it's the outdoor soccer field Yeah. in his spare time. And in recognition of that, that field was named after him. Uh, it's the Carl Chessier Memorial Field, and there was a plaque. Uh, and I, I recall during the presentation of the uh, of the project by rec and the, and the engineer and, and everything that they, they knew that they had the plaque removed during construction, and I haven't had a chance to see if it had gone back up. So I was once wondering if someone could just double-check on that.
I will be happy to.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem.
It just came to mind because of the uh discussion we're having now.
Uh, so do we have recommendations on the best way to proceed with this? I mean, I, it's, it's.
Yeah, I think there's just a lot going on with it.
Yeah.
Like, I don't like how that policy is written either. Like Janet said, like, I don't know that that's appropriate even for a policy to state an opinion about healthy practices by grief experts. I don't, I don't, you know, so I think it's like, okay, we reworked the policy, and then there's the situation with the memorials, and I agree with Mr. Wong's points about that. Um, I don't know.
What, can we ex, explore the idea of having an area on the new field, if, if, just explore of where, say, in, in the, you know, like they do with the, um, like we did at Wampe Tuck, you know, people purchased a brick, you know, so that something set aside, and then if families wanted to purchase some kind of small plaque to honor student athletes that went through the school, at least it would be in one area. And I don't know if there's room out there in the, in the new complex.
All right, but then I could.
But it would kind of solve.
What control do we have over the field or anything out there? Right? In terms of maintenance and other sorts of things.
Just to add some context, if I might, Chairman Gates, um, I did have a conversation with Town Administrator Boudreaux about this. And since, you know, standing from the town, it says that the, the fields and surrounding buildings are co-owned, if you will, by the school and the town, so it may be a decision that you both have to make. If you make, say yes, that's, that's like, what might have to have a say in this, I'm not sure. I can find that out, but um, that's the information I did get from, um, from a town administrator. And in my experience with the, all the policies written, I'm not sure because I, I wasn't here for this one. But there was a timeframe when there was a lot of conversation, I have the experience in my history with this, about suicides. And the child being very popular in the school and memorials, and I think that's where the grief part comes in, and it may be referring to that specifically, but it should have probably said that, so it leads us to believe. I don't know, I don't think it's referring to all memorials. But again, like I said, I, I don't know the context to this, but I am familiar with, um, examples of that's when grief counselors would, and research has showed, um, and cited that due to, to suicide specifically. I'm not sure if it expands out to other memorials or not.
So do, do we have any recommendations on how best to proceed with this? I, I get it. Sadly, I spend so much time on this, because it should be more clear-cut, but again, we don't want to, again, they're trying to do a good deed, and we don't want to, to, to tell them not to, but we just have to make sure that we're uh, following some sort of protocol in doing so. So I don't, I don't really know the best way to proceed. Again, I would take recommendations by the committee. I don't know if having more information on the individual situation, I don't think it should impact our decision. But again, I think that the, the issues we have, number one, does our policy allow for it? And number two, as Superintendent Burkhead referenced, do we really have authority over allowing a memorial to be placed outside of one of our school buildings? Any? Any recommendations on how to?
Best experience, Pete, I recall any memorial, whether it was this, whether it was the um uh, memorial plaque for uh Mr. Svenson or, or Carl Chessier or, um, uh, Principal Blake's bench in the, uh, at the old gates that was moved to the new gates, or the uh Colby Cutler Center, or the Colby Cutler Tree. Center, or the Colby Cutler tree that was planted. I don't recall really clearing it with anybody. It was, it was, it was just brought to the school committee for its approval. And again, I don't know if, you know, I do think certainly as a matter of courtesy, at a minimum, it needs, it should be run by the, by town. Because they own, they, as Bill said, they owners of the, of the school property, so. And again, as I said before, I think it would be, I'd be hard pressed to believe the selectmen would say no if it was something that we wanted to do, but and the only other thing I'll say, this, I mean, we have not had a inordinate amount of memorial requests. In my opinion, or in my memory. So I don't know if this is opening floodgates or not. But we have not had that many requests over the years for this type of thing.
I agree. I agree. I don't think we've had many. I don't know if we would be inundated, hopefully not, but I'm just wondering if the fact now that we have a much updated facility, if that potentially would encourage more. I don't know, I have any reason to believe that, but yeah, we, again, I said it many times, I want to, you know, be a dead horse, but this family is trying to do something nice. We don't want to make it for them. I just want to make sure that we do it according to our policy and that if we do approve it, that it actually can happen. You know? You know, who will be in charge of the process? Who will make sure it gets positioned correctly? Who will, you know, make sure it fits whatever guidelines need to be fit, that sort of thing?
Sure.
So, you know, maybe, Superintendent Burkett, we go. What do you, what are your recommendations on how you'd like to see us proceed?
Bringing a little bit of the background and that there's not a lot of requests. I don't think there, everywhere I've been, you've got a couple, every couple of years, maybe. We've got a lot of room out there. A couple benches would be a bad thing, so I think even if we got five, 10, 15, we've got plenty of room for 15 benches if that were to be the case over the course of the next five or 10 years. So I, you know, and I think maintenance of a bench is pretty easy. You know, and something we could probably, you know, work out with the town on taking care of that, so I would assume responsibility for that, so. I don't think it would be a huge, a huge burden on us, and there is, and there's plenty of room along all the walkways, and the request wasn't, it was very humble, wasn't very specific. It could be anywhere in the, near the field, so.
It's a granite bench?
Somewhere to support that family, but also allow folks for our school to add a nice bench to our area and to have place for people to relax and appreciate. Another story of Citewitt, so that's my two cents.
What I would ask is if we can just be certain of all the different groups that would potentially need to approve this in addition to our approval. And if it's just Austin, obviously, we can vote as we, as we seem fit. If there are other groups, just so that we're aware that those other groups need to approve this as well. And again, I don't know why anyone would necessarily vote against it unless it were against one of their policies. But I think for me anyways, it would be helpful to know, does the select board need to do it? Does rec department need to approve it? Just those sorts of things. And I think that for me, you know, with that information, I think that I could, I could move to a vote at that point.
Be certainly able to do that, and it's not on the agenda to vote tonight anyways. In the meantime, I can certainly get the committee, the actual, more details about the specific request. I can actually show you the request from the family, so you have all the details, and I can work with the town administrator to get the answers on. Like Mr. Hayes said, notifying the select board and finding out the process for the approval for this potential memorial. And I have that information by the next meeting for you all, so you have an educated you have the background and context before voting, if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be great. If, I mean, if, if you're looking for a consensus, Pete, go ahead, Mike.
The only other thing I was going to add was if we can get some detail, just, we can do the research as a group, but just what other towns are doing in the area. I mean, the idea of the brick is a good idea. You know, we get to a certain point where we don't have enough room for, you know, 20 benches, 30 benches, whatever the case may be, so just having a consistent approach, I think will make a lot of sense, but you know, that might help drive the decision as well.
To everyone feel the dreams.
And I was just going to say, Pete, if you were looking for some kind of consensus, I agree with your thoughts on it as well. To, would be to lean toward approving it, so.
Okay, well, we'll just get the answer to some of those questions, and then we'll look to potentially vote on it next, next, next meeting. Again, it's so sad that we had to spend however many minutes on this, because we shouldn't have had to spend more than two minutes on it, but just what we, what we deal with, right? All right, any other comments or questions? All right, so now we'll move on to snow days.
I'm muted off. Well, when I was hired, Chairman Gates told me that doesn't snow in Citewitt, so I don't even know why this is on the agenda. But finding that hard to believe with some of the windstorms and the power outages that I've experienced already. So this is on here just to discuss, the commissioner has allowed this year because of COVID, the opportunity for schools that were interested to use snow days if they seem necessary as remote days and count the days towards learning and not add them to the, in the school year. And I think there's a mixed, mixed reactions in the, in the school communities. Some are, some are liking it, some are not. I'll provide you with the pros and cons and hear your feedback and give you my opinion on it, but you know, we did, we did send this questionnaire up to the teachers' union. They, they supported it. Not as overwhelmingly as they supported the other MOAs we had, so it was a, it was a little bit closer on that. But things to consider that I'm, that concerned me about it. I like the concept because it's real simple. Makes my call a lot easier. Where it's even close, we go remote and everyone's safe, and we have learning at home. However, the reality and the practicality of it is this that with storms, and I think you saw it in some of the survey results, and what we've been battling with in Citewitt is the technology and the loss of power that typically comes with a snowstorm. And the loss of the amount of kids that we'd be able to reach, teachers that wouldn't have internet access if they lived in other towns, connecting with students, so it it could, it could be a day that counts on the calendar, but it could create more of a disconnect with that. So that's a concern. The other concern is equity in staffing. Some staff would be able to work on that day and others would not, so it would become a contractual issue where we'd have to renegotiate, which would also be a problem. For example, our teachers and paraprofessionals would be able to work remotely. Our custodians would likely be in handling the snow. But our cafeteria workers and our bus drivers would not be working. And what do we do with them on that day? They would be home without pay, so we'd have to find out an equitable way to handle that in their contract. So some unique things that we had to think through there. So with, with all that being said, it, it sounds good on paper. We can certainly do it. If the committee wants me to investigate it further, my, after researching it on my end, I would continue with regular snow days. If a snow day is a snow day and the weather's that bad, we take the day and we add it when there's better weather. And again, my hope is to be back in full in person by the end of the year, and maybe we gain a day of in-person learning. That's one way to look at it. We also have, the trump card here is that if we have multiple snow days and we're in a really bad winter, and we've already in two or three, then we go and, and we say, okay, we've got this option, let's take advantage, so we're not going to school till the end of June. So it's, it's not something we have to decide completely now. We can say, okay, we're going to go with regular snow days, and then if we get a couple of early ones right off the bat, we might have to come up with a plan and work those things out that I talked about and go with it. So that's kind of my two cents on it right now, but I'll certainly take questions or feedback from the committee.
Any questions for Superintendent Burkett from the committee?
I had one quick question.
Mr. Hayes.
Bill, I mean, the five, we still have five days figured into the, into the system, right? Or not? You need a calendar, I need. Did you hear me or not? I don't think his mic's on.
That's what my kids tell me. My light bulb's never on. Sometimes I hear them, sometimes I don't. I'm sorry, I did hear you. I have my mute on. Yes, we do have the five days built in. And that was kind of my thought process, that we do have those already there, and if we start getting close to three or four, then we do have this option to go remote if we had to, and that's where I would like to consider it.
No, I appreciate that, and I agree 100%. I don't see any reason to change our current way we handle snow days right now. That's my opinion, yeah. Snow days.
Any other comments or questions from the committee? Ms. Lindblom.
I agree with Mike with, for all the reasons that Bill stated that, you know, with a snowstorm comes power outage, so you know, if kids can't get online or teachers can't get online, or, you know, it's, it kind of defeats the purpose of setting up a snow day like that. I agree. I think we should leave it as is.
Any other comments?
So, Mr. Burkett, so you were saying you could, I like the idea, though, of having, I definitely appreciate those points in power outages, for sure. But I do like the idea of the flexibility piece, that what if, you know, if we're going to learn something from pandemic learning, to certainly vet this really thoroughly. I'm curious what generally teachers opinions are, and as you said, other, you know, looking at bus drivers and things, and I think that equity piece is important too. But I'm just curious if teachers feel like, I don't know, even if it's like a day or two, or if we're hitting our max days, could materials be shifted and absorbed or like hybrided out somehow, you know, just to save a few days or not dipping deep into June or I, I like the idea of having some kind of flexibility with it for administration and not necessarily just saying this is it.
Correct. That's my recommendation is that. At this point, my recommendation is we let's keep snow days, but certainly we, you know, we can do it. We've already done it. We've done it at the high school pretty seamlessly for two, almost two weeks, and we've done it at the Cushing on a power outage day. We've had practice, the teachers are ready. You know, like I said, we haven't done district wides, but I do have the confidence if we get a couple of, two or three snow days right off the bat, that we can revisit this, and I can have this information and a plan ready for this, you know, for, for your approval at that time. But I don't think it's hard. I just think it's, you know, we wanted, I wanted to talk about this tonight, so when we have our first snow day, that we're all on the same page, that you know, my thought would be, it is a snow day, but, but there's always the possibility that we, we do have the flexibility to go remote. If like Mr. Hayes says, we get in danger, because, you know, there's been years, right, where you didn't have the option, and schools are talking about using April vacation, and talking about Saturdays, and you know, by having this option, we won't ever have to go there. Well, I think we, the plan may be is after the fifth day, we kick into this or something like that. I can start working with that with our, with our team.
I'm not sure if they have all the backups. A couple of years ago, we looked at the blizzard bag approach that another state came out with and then got rid of. So if they didn't think we can leverage from the past as a potential solution, you know, we might still have that information somewhere.
We do, Mr. Wong, and that came up, and we'll be using it. There's a lot of good points to that, yes, that, so thank you.
All right, I would echo Superintendent Burkett. Those are two points that you had, that I think I'm fully on board with is number one, best case scenario, we get back to full in-person learning in the, in the springtime, and we're able to take advantage of those potential remote days and make them back in person. And when you were hired, I didn't tell you there was no, so I said, did you have, I said, have you ever, I said, have you ever been to Citewitt and had to deal with any flooding issues? That's what I said.
Oh, okay.
That's what I said. So with that being said, and this is not to make things confusing, but if we wanted to at some, if we were getting close to our five days and we wanted to switch to snow days, do you need a vote from the school committee to do that?
I don't.
Okay.
I think, if I get your support, you know, tonight I can start working on it. I just wanted to keep you on the low point of your feedback. I mean, for example, if you were adamant, like, no, let's, let's go remote right away, then I'd make it happen. It sounds like there is some flexibility in there where we can where I can prepare to move on, that we don't want to go beyond five days and get in the situations where we're going into late June, and then you know, contractual issues there, so we can have a plan B where COVID is contingency, so we've got plans A, B, C, and D, so I'll have that plan ready, and so I can share that to you at another meeting. And it just takes working with those groups that I talked about, and, but I, I feel confident we'll be ready for the reasons I gave you, is not why I think it would be my first choice.
Right.
And quite honestly, the last one that I, it's just a sense of normalcy for the kids to go out and play in the snow. And some kids shovel their grandmother's driveway and shovel their parents', and there's a lot of stuff, at least I know in my own home, that goes on just, you know, on a snow day, that's not, you know, that's taken away from, you know, if I'm, if I'm having to be at school and I have to shovel my mom or dad out to go to work, now you've got kids missing. So there's a lot of stuff, I think, that happens during a storm that we, you know, it sounds pretty easy just to flip to remote, but I'm just thinking we'd have a lot of absences that day.
Yep.
Justifiably. And so that's my concern. I'd like to look at it as a, as a plan B if we need it.
No, I fully agree, but the other thing I forgot to mention to you when you were hired is that it only snows on Wednesdays.
That would be great.
So if it snows on Wednesday, I would think the remote option would be a lot easier, if we have power, of course.
In that case, that is a remote day, so it would be, it would go on.
All right, so I think that, does the committee feel strongly that the recommendation of Superintendent Burkett is how we want to proceed?
Yep.
We don't need to vote on it, but you have our support, and I guess plan B if we are we're still inclined as we approach the five, five days.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. I'm going to try to share my screen here. Come on, I hope I can do it. I am terrible at this. There we go. Hold on. Can you see that? Wasn't the right screen. Hold on. Let's try one more time. I'm not, I'm not that good at technology sometimes. I don't know why I can't do. Doesn't, doesn't let me share anyone. Yeah, but I can't get in it. Hold on. That's right there.
Okay, so let's.
Then I. That's not the right one. There we go. All right. So how about that? Can you see that now?
You did it.
Am I on mute? All right, for the committee and for those still in attendance, throughout our year, we have been attending workshops that are offered and sponsored by MASK, Masked Association of School Committees. And a few weeks ago, we met with them to discuss kind of what we should be doing. And one of those things that we noticed that we hadn't been doing in the past was creating goals for our school committee. So we can determine our success or lack thereof or progress throughout the year. So what we did was learn how to develop SMART goals. And on MASK recommendation, what we've done is created three goals that focus on those three priorities that we felt as a school committee were most important. I do want to note that part of the complexity of this and something that, that I'm struggling with as the chair is we can't discuss this stuff outside of public meetings. So after that work, workshop, three school committee members each took one topic and one goals and attempted to create what you see here, which are the, the three goals. So this is really the first time as a committee that we've all seen these. And though on the agenda, we do have the option to discuss and vote these, we may just want to use this for discussion and potentially vote them at our next meeting. We don't want to, I don't want this to go too long. We're already several months into the school year. So, but by delaying it by another couple of weeks, I think are okay with it. So what I'd like to do is, I guess I can, do you want to read your own or do you want me to read them? I'll have you guys read them. You should get the credit for working on them. So just in no particular order, one of our goals was a wellness goal. I'd like to have Mr. Long read his goal and then we can discuss if we should have, make any changes or if we should keep as is. So, Mr. Long.
Okay. So when we did meet with MASK, something that we talked about in health and wellness was reducing the amount of out of school work for students, homework expectation, technology support, and social and emotional wellness. So that's very apropos for tonight. And the presentations we got from the principals earlier tonight. But the goal is, the Situate School Committee is committed to providing staff and students with a healthy environment to learn and grow in. We will accomplish this by setting realistic expectations for the amount of work completed outside of school, monitoring in the requirements for how the work is to be completed. The expected result is that students are able to have a healthy work-life balance and spend the appropriate amount of time using technology for their age group.
Okay, are there any comments on, on this particular goal, which again addresses the health and wellness of our students and staff?
I like it, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
I like it too. I think it really, basically, excuse me, that's what Mike said, choking, nevermind, go to somebody else. That just based on the presentations by the principals tonight, you know, I think we were on track with what a priority would be for our district with this goal. So I think it's, it's a good goal.
That's what's going on.
Okay. I like it too. My only comment would be, I just don't know how we are able to determine the amount of work to be complete outside of school. That's all. I just don't know how we're, how we're able to, to really do any, have any influence on that. So that's, that's my only concern. I like, I like the first, I like this, I like everything else about it. I like the expected result. Just not sure how we're able to have any influence over expectations for the amount of work. That's my only concern on that.
I think part of that's going to come out of how we respond to the survey results that came out that we saw tonight. I think Principal Beatty said there's another survey in February. So seeing where that goes and then continuing on, I mean, this doesn't have to end this year. We can say that we're going to cut down on technology by whatever, you know, in the coming years, or we're going to cut homework down in the coming years. So, I mean, at the end of the day, to me, it, it's going to come down more to just reviewing the data we have and then trying to set those expectations. And it might go up and down a little bit over the next couple of years, but just, you know, getting the feedback from parents and students and staff and think, does this, the amount of work that we put on our students make sense? Yes or no? And then what is the true expectation? I don't, we don't need to sit there and say, you know, two hours of homework a night for this grade and 30 minutes for another grade, but just, are we getting the message in the education that the kids need through with the work that we're providing outside of school? Yes or no? And then do we need to, you know, toggle that up or down as we need to?
Okay, any other comments? Okay. All right. And I guess, again, we won't vote on this tonight. We'll just, we'll just table it, but.
I guess I have a question.
Sure.
Based off what Mike just said. So I get, it's just to putting it out there, question, is there any, or, and your question too, Peter, of what is, how can we monitor this? Is there anything that we as a school committee think we need to look at in our policies that support reaching this goal? I think is where our lens is kind of through this. That was just a general, putting it out there question for you all. Not that you need to have an answer, just maybe that's how we look at how we measure it. And I know Superintendent Burkett is very well versed in SMART goals, so maybe you can jump in if you had any expert advice on that.
I think, you know, this aligns with my goals, with the, with the principal's goals, with the district goals. I think we'd be able to supply this, like tonight, I think that was one of the big takeaways was the, was there just enough work, too much, not enough? And that, that worked to life balance. We're also looking at social emotional learning. And that wasn't as much on that piece of the survey, but I think that would blend into this as well, as we share more of the work we're doing on social emotional learning. I think it would fall into here, because what I'm reading here is that that healthy work-life balance, especially during a pandemic. And that's why we asked those questions. Is it too much, is too much technology time? Is it just enough? So I think we, we showed the beginning data of that tonight and then we'll have follow-up data. So I, and I agree with Mr. Long that if, if we're showing good progress, you know, does this goal get expanded on for the following year or changed or whatever? We won't have a problem kind of being able to share with you evidence of achieving this goal.
Okay. I didn't, I guess what I'll, what I'll offer is, after this meeting, I'll, we can review slightly, wordage a little bit before we vote on it. I don't want to go through and change individual words right here, but I'll take that on and I'll, I'll send them. And I'll work with each of you individually. But if you like the, the fray bark of that and most of that, we'll, we'll move forward. The next one is our cultural proficiency goal. Ms. Brinley.
Okay. During the 2020-21 school year, the Situate School Committee commits to fostering systemic changes within our schools by approving policies and funding to ensure staff and students are equipped with the tools and resources for culturally competent teaching and learning. We commit to creating a safe and inclusive environment for all students to learn and meet their fullest potential as evidenced by, and I think we discussed a little bit, striking specifics out of this and keeping it broad-based. So we're probably going to strike the part where it says, even though we, yes, we're the process of accomplishing this portion of this goal. Funding a new diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI director, professional development opportunities for staff in supporting the initiatives of our administrators to create physically and culturally inviting learning environments.
Yep.
So if we strike that piece out, keep it a little more broad.
Yeah, so we would just strike out the, as evidenced by the funding of a new diversity equity inclusion director.
Right. And we did discuss, I mean, this goal is kind of, I think I said it in our, our session with Jim, that we're kind of like backing into this goal because it's something we started and before the goal was written, but we knew we needed and wanted to work on it. So we have already some of the pieces in place to meet our goal, which is really nice to start. But this just kind of puts it further on paper and it, as Mr. Burkett said too, I mean, that's the district goal, so we're all kind of marching to the same rhythm here with, with this.
Right. I think it's great. Any, any comments by the committee?
I think it's awesome, Nicole.
None? Seeing none. The third and final one of our goals is a safe and strong return to school. Ms. Lindblom.
Okay. One goal of the school committee for the 2020-21 school year is for all students to return to, I'm not going to read it all, so you know. For all stu-, slow down. For all students to return to full in-person learning by the end of the school year. In-person learning is what is best for students and staff, both academically and psychologically. And in order to fulfill the school goal, the school committee will look at, look to data and get guidance from the CDC, DPH, DESI, Border Health, and will, we will rely on the positivity rate of COVID cases in town with the, in the availability of the vaccine. I can go in further into the whole thing, but we're kind of just looking on how we're going to fulfill that goal.
Yeah, I think, I think that this, I mean, ultimately, our goal again is just to build on, the goal to begin in the year was a safe and strong reopening plan. I think that we've accomplished that. I think that everyone, I think that, not everyone, I think most folks, probably the majority of the school committee as well, if not all, would, would like to go fully back to person if at all possible. So I think that this goal really is meant to maximize the in-person learning time according to these guidelines that have been mentioned here. In terms of, in terms of the, of stating the overall goal, I just think we might have to just trim it down a little bit, just maybe just to end it right there. You know, I think it is, this has all of, yeah, no, this has all the information, but, but we probably just want to simplify a little bit. And I don't think we need to necessarily include everything else that's in there. But we'll be measured, or we'll be able to determine the success of, of getting to this goal by, you know, as evidenced by what you've written there. So probably just reworked out a little bit to, you know, to really just end there, I think. Any comments by the committee?
I think at the end of the first sentence, we just want to make sure that it's clear that, you know, obviously we want to come back to in-person learning if possible, but, you know, there are outside factors that might prevent that from occurring. So we just want to acknowledge that, you know, that could prevent us from achieving this goal. And obviously, we're not going to just try to meet this if there's a high positivity rate in the town or anything like that. Like, we're going to use all of the data that we've been using to date. And anything else that becomes available to make that decision and not just come back to come back.
All right. Any other comments or questions? I think, again, I think that as a committee, we always had in our mind what our goals were for the year. We just never stated them. So this is an opportunity to do that. And it's something that, you know, as we discussed in our workshop, it's probably most appropriate to have, you know, September, you know, September to June goals and then, and then start, restate them or, or reinitiate new ones with each school year. So this is the first step in doing so. I'll take some time and review, you know, just the wordsmiths of some of these and then we'll just vote on them next meeting. And that's it. Any other questions or comments at this point? All right. Thanks. Again, I'm going to give credit to Mr. Long, Ms. Brinley and Ms. Lindblom for doing this. Again, addition to all the meetings that they attend, some committees and somebody also took on this responsibility. So thank you for doing that. All right. So now the next opportunity for public comments. Please raise your hand using the emoji option if you have a comment at this point. Nothing. Woo-hoo. All right. We will move on. We get Dr. Dutch again. Capital Plan Progress Report. I just want to preface this by stating, you know, every year at town meeting, our, our, our capital items are presented to the town and they are voted on. And then generally, we don't necessarily know the status of all of those. So we do get asked through overtime how we're doing. So I've asked Dr. Dutch to, he was not part of the capital plan for this year, but he had been so kind to update us on the progress of those items that were approved at the annual town meeting that was in June. Dr. Dutch.
Good evening again. I've shared the screen and now I'm not sure that I can see the entire presentation, so I'll leave it this way. But I wanted to update you on our capital projects primarily focusing on those items that were approved for FY21 for this fiscal year. But then also to give you a broader picture of what we're looking at long-term, at least in the district, we'll see if the town has that same vision. So for this, this year thus far, one of the items on our capital plan was technology. We were approved for $150,000 of technology to be purchased. And we have completed that. So we've bought $150,000 worth of materials, specifically VMware, which are servers primarily, wireless access points so that our students can use their Chromebooks effectively throughout the building. And then laptops for our teachers. And you'll see later in this presentation that there's technology included each year. We have a plan to cycle out laptops and Chromebooks over a period of time on a, on a regular cycle. The next item that was approved was replacing the library carpet at the high school. It was for an amount of $65,000. That is in process. The flooring has been selected. The contractor's been selected. And it is scheduled to be installed during the holiday break, December 23rd to January 4th. Smoke detectors, we've been approved again for $50,000 in smoke detectors for the Hatherly and Cushing schools. The prices have been quoted. The vendor has been selected. And now we're simply waiting for that to be scheduled. Specifically, we will have wireless smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors installed at the Cushing and Hatherly school. And as I said, we are waiting for the contractor to provide us with a final schedule as to when that will be happening. And we're hopeful that it'll, it'll be in place by the time we come back from the holiday break. High school locker rooms, those were approved as part of a four-phase plan. The status of that is we are in phase two. Phase one was the architectural drawings. And those plans have been completed. We're now in the process of preparing bid documents. Because of the size of this project, it has to go out to bid through the central register. That's not something we can just get quotes for. Specifically, it's the renovation of the boys and girls locker rooms and the fitness training rooms for that, that $700,000 cost. We're in phase two of the four year, of the four-phase plan. Phase two specifically is the renovation of the girls locker. is the renovation of the girls' locker room. The timeline, we're preparing the bid specs for the girls' locker room renovation, and we hope to start the work when school ends at the end of June and complete it by the end of August when students are returning. The portico at Wampe Tuck, it's been an item that's been under discussion for quite a while, based on my review of past years. It is a safety hazard. The poles have been repaired and recemented several times, and they're now not, you know, they're in a position where it's not, not able to handle the snow load that could potentially be upon it. So we're looking to do that replacement as well. Again, the design is complete. The bid specs are being prepared, and that is something that will be done when students aren't in school also, given the length of time. The bid documents would have to go to the central register, as was mentioned, hoping to do that after the first of the year. And then the work would start in June and be done by the time we're returning in August. Special education vans. We, again, were approved for two vans, which has been completed. We've purchased those. They're registered and on campus and being used to transport special education students, both within the district and occasionally out of the district. The long-term projects for FY22 and '26 that were submitted in our capital plan. The items that were requested for FY22, I mentioned to you, school technology would be on that on an annual basis. There are, is a three-phase plan for replacing the flooring at the high school. The next is for FY22, replacing second floor flooring at a cost of $250,000. And then the parking lot at Wampe Tuck at a cost of $303,673. These are the items that we're hoping to get approved for FY22, so that we can start this beginning July 1. And the hope would be that we would do the parking lot through the summer and have that completed by the time we return. And the same with the high school flooring. FY23 and '24 requests. For FY23, you can see there's a fairly significant number of items with fair, with high costs. Many of our roofs are in difficult situations and need replacement. So we have those all. And obviously, we would go through the MSBA green repair process, where we would be reimbursed at least 40% of that cost. So again, school technology and FY23, the third phase of the high school flooring replacement, which would then have all of the floors replaced in the high school. Sink replacement at the elementary schools at a cost of $179,000. And then the roofs at Wampe Tuck, Hatherley, and the high school, and the Jenkins School. So you can see the costs for those, where they're round numbers like the high school, anticipating those are estimates that, rather than hard costs, whereas the others are a little more realistic and hard numbers. And it's not the full roof at the high school that's needing replacement. For FY24, we'd look to replace the floor, flooring at Wampe Tuck, the flooring at the small gym at the high school, the portico, the front portico at Cushing, and the parking lot at Hatherley. For FY25 and '26, FY25, we're looking to update the teachers' room at Wampe Tuck School, replace the unit vents at Hatherley, the windows at the Cushing School, and then the main gym floor at the high school. And you'll notice that there isn't much in the '22, ' '23 range for Hatherley and Cushing, because it's our hope that by '26, we'll be approved for a new elementary school to replace the Cushing and Hatherley schools. We are in, we do have a statement of interest that we've submitted, and we're waiting for word to see if we're in the pipeline for approval. At that, it would still be six to seven years before you'd have a new building. So that's why we've pushed it out to this point. And that's it. So I certainly welcome questions. Hopefully, this provides you with a status update as to where we are at this point in time with capital projects.
That's great. Thanks very much, Dr. Dutch. I appreciate it. Obviously, you jumped in this position the end of the summer. So you inherited the capital plan and the, and the current project. I appreciate you doing the research and giving us up-to-date info. I just have one question for the committee is, can you just comment just quickly, of the projects that we're currently doing that have not yet been completed, would you attribute that mostly to the pandemic? In terms of getting some of these things done?
I'm sure that some of it is the pandemic, but in reality, you know, we've spent so much time trying to get the buildings with airflow and heating and all of those situations, because we, A, we had to complete it by the end of December for CARES Act reimbursement, number one. And number two, it was probably of higher priority than, than any of these items, given the safety issues that, that they represented. A lot of these, you know, some of these are cosmetic. The smoke detectors and the portico, obviously, are safety issues that, which is why we're doing those right now. We've kind of jumped on those. You know, getting, getting folks to bid on this, I think, may be a challenge, some of this work may be a challenge, because there are so many projects out there that are going on, and a lot of contractors are having difficulty keeping staff to get things done. So, you know, more of it is because we were doing other things and not so much contractor-driven. And I'm hopeful that when we're looking to do these projects, the contractors will be able to, to fit us in at a reasonable and not an inflated cost.
Great. No, I would agree that everything that we did to get the schools ready, we're certainly a priority over the majority of, the majority of these capital projects. So I appreciate it. Any comments or questions from the committee?
I had a couple of comments.
Mr. Hayes?
One of the things, there are a couple of things that we need to be prepared for. I'm sorry. A lot of discussion regarding repaving Cushing and Hatherley parking lots. So, I mean, those are down the road, I know, but I think people will, might question that. And the other thing is, I just want to make sure, you know, that there's been controversy and that's over the Wampe Tuck roof and the money that was borrowed previously to MSBA to, to work on Wampe Tuck. We want to make sure, I believe we, I'm 99.9% sure, we've addressed that issue, that we are beyond the five-year limit of not spending all that, all the money that was done. Or, but I mean, I know this is a capital plan, but I think people have questions on that. So I think those three things, the stuff that we need to be prepared to discuss.
Hey, Mike, I think, and Dr. Dutch, you, you know, you're well, we're probably more well-versed in it than some of us, is that Will, obviously, you'll bring to us the capital projects, and we vote on them every year in terms of which ones go before town.
Right.
So, all right. Anything else, Mr. Hayes?
Nope.
Any questions here? Ms. Brinleeny?
Yeah, just a quick question. Just based off of the surveys that we heard from tonight that mentioned the technology issues on student ends and things, I just wanted to see, make sure that, and obviously, based on these capital projects, and we're obviously investing in technology. So I guess I just wanted to make sure that there isn't anything on our end that's affecting kids and families not being able to access or utilize technology, and that the issues that are arising, that are kind of coming out through those surveys, are more connectivity issues and things like that, that are outside of our realm, since obviously, we're putting money into technology. And I know that goes into many different assets and pieces of technology. But I just wanted to make sure that there's, we're not missing anything on our end, that kids and families aren't being able to achieve all these hybrid learning goals.
Yeah, the, the challenges that you're hearing about are related to connectivity throughout Situate, which, from what I understand, is, is a challenge. We, we have, through the CARES Act, purchased some, some hotspots for students who are in situations where they're unable to access the internet. But if, if the challenge is connectivity, then that's still an issue, even with a wireless hotspot, because it's dependent on cell towers and, you know, the connectivity from that, related to that. So that's something that's beyond, beyond our capacity to address. Within the building, that's the reason we've added the access points, is to make sure that the connectivity for, for students that are on laptops or Chromebooks is sufficient, given the volume of students that would be engaged.
All right. Any other questions or comments? I'll just note, it is 9:28. Just let everybody know. Dr. Dutch, thank you very much. Again, I really appreciate, I know that you're inheriting this capital plan, so I appreciate you getting up to date on everything. Much appreciated.
My pleasure.
All right. Superintendent Burkhead's Leadership Report.
Thank you, Chairman Gates. I'll try to be brief, but in the light of Thanksgiving spirit, I just wanted to share some thank yous to Mr. Sweat tonight and our Social Studies and History Department, and especially the kids that made the, the student video at the beginning. Really great to see that. So thank you all for, for doing that. Also want to welcome back our high school staff and students today. We missed you. In the buildings where my office is located, I can hear the footsteps and look out my door and go for a little walk when I'm getting all stir-crazy and just seeing the kids and hearing the laughter in the hallways and in the lunchroom was really uplifting for me. And I'm hoping it was the same for the staff and students to see each other's faces again. And I want to give a special, you know, shout-out, and I think Mr. Umbriana did a real nice job tonight and has done an excellent job during the pandemic, managing athletics, the quarantining that we've had to do, the cancellations, the fear of bad news. And I just want to reach out to those athletes and their families and say thank you from the bottom of my heart to, for, you know, putting up with what you have. My only advice for those in the winter sports is to cherish every moment. It's really exciting that we're having the opportunity to participate in winter sports. Not all of them, I understand. You know, being a, a former collegiate athlete, high school athlete, coach, and parent of a, of a senior in college who lost a season, it does hit home. It does become personal to me. And one of the hardest decisions I had to make this year was closing the high school on the day that we had field hockey and girls' soccer championships. So I want to personally say to the field hockey team and to the girls' soccer team, I really respect how you handled the situation, the sacrifice you made, you're champions in all of our hearts and minds. And just want to let you know that a big part of that decision was discussed about canceling those games. So you were included in that conversation. It was the most difficult conversation that we had to have and decision that hadn't been made. But I really respect how you handled it, and I want to thank you for understanding and pulling through and getting stronger on the other side of it. It just one, a really specific example of how there's collateral damage in all of this COVID, and it's impacting our youngest kids. And so for those families up there too, thanks for understanding that we have to sacrifice sometimes to protect the greater good. And there's a lot of decisions that all of our leaders are making and our staff these days that are quite difficult and not easy. But safety will always be of the utmost importance. I want to thank our principals tonight for their, all the work behind the scenes in, in conducting these surveys. Surveys, as you may know, are quite difficult to come up with the right questions. They collaborated. It was noticed by the school committee tonight that our elementary principals have put a lot of work into collaboration this year for consistency across grade levels. I think we're doing a real good job of that. In our middle and high school principals and assistant principals work together on the surveys at the upper elementary or the high school, excuse me, middle school level. So collecting that, then getting your staff and students involved with that information. It's not always a good news, as we saw. So I think we're brave enough and courageous enough as a district to ask for input. We've been transparent in everything we've done. We're not afraid of anything. And so I want to thank them for being courageous enough to take the good, the good and the bad and the ugly with the surveys, turning it into action steps to improve. That's how you become the greatest school in the world, is by taking input, not sticking your head in the sand, and then doing something about it. So kudos to you all and your teams for doing that. And then for Rosie, John, and Celia, student reporters tonight, sharing all that good news is really a nice thing to hear. We really appreciate you at these meetings, sharing what's happening in our high school. So that being said, that's my, one more thank you. I want to thank the school committee here for all their hard work and support for our special town meeting articles, for the full-day kindergarten and the amount of $450,000, and the special education stabilization fund, having our back, going to bat for that, supporting that. I also want to thank the town advisory committee, the board, town administrator, town finance, Nancy Holt, and all those that came out to vote unanimously in support of both those articles. It shows me as a new superintendent, the support we have in education in the town. It's why I was attracted to this district, and it was in full effect through that process. So I'm very optimistic looking forward, and just wanted to thank anybody personally for your support with those two major articles. Next for me, just a Cushing School update. We had a couple of evacuations in the Cushing School. So I wanted to, I know Ms. Principal Moffett has done a really good job communicating as all our principals when situations like this arise. But I wanted to give you an update. Dr. Dutch did allude to it, that safety is our number one priority. So the smell of smoke at the Cushing Schools resulted in evacuations, where we had to call the fire department. In both instances, the cause of the smoke was a short of two different motors. These short circuits of the motors occurred simultaneously to a loss of power. So their connection was, both times it was a power outage. Additionally, it was discovered that these motors had faulty starters. Having discovered this, we are replacing the starters on all the HVAC motors at the Cushing School, and this work will be completed by the end of this week. So thanks again to Dr. Dutch for that, Bob Dillon on the front lines with his team. He's really been a superstar this year in getting that all done and getting it done quickly. And the next, additionally, we have received quotes, and we'll be soon installing smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors throughout the school to ensure the safety of our students and staff. And we'll, finally, we'll continue to work with National Grid to determine the cause of the repeated power outages in the area. So all good news for those Cushing families and staff, knowing that we've identified the issues and we're addressing them to keep everybody safe. Before I introduce my two special guests tonight, I want to say it's on our next agenda. The principals, again, working very hard for the first time in three years, they'll be putting together school improvement plans. This is a really integral part of bringing out, carrying out your goals and your action steps. So I look forward to them sharing those at the next school committee meeting. And you'll see kind of firsthand how our school councils work hand-in-hand as a guiding body of the schools to put action steps into goals and give you a picture of what we look to accomplish this year. So that will be for our next one. Next, I would just like, if I could have Ms. Arnold, we're in the heart of our search for a new director of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So So I've asked Ms. Arnold, one of the co-chairs of that committee, should give a brief report on where we stand.
Hi, thank you Superintendent Burkhead, school committee members. Good evening. So to update the search process, we have interviewed five candidates and we selected two finalists who held, hosted community forums, sorry, two forums last week and the week before, a student forum and a staff forum. The thing they were, they presented upon was a training for, that would be INDEED caregivers. So essentially it was like a professional development training. And the audience, the intended audience would be caregivers. And the subject was talking about identities, you know, to include race, LGBTQIA, special education students or people with physical or intellectual challenges. So they both presented, the two finalists presented separately on that topic. And for the student forum, we had 12 students attend, both from Gates and High School. And for the staff forum, 32 people attended from, throughout the district. After each of the forums, we asked the attendees to fill out a post-form survey. And seven completed the post-form survey of the students. Seven of the students completed it. And 25 of the staff completed it. So we got some good information on how the attendees felt about the presentations by each of the candidate. You know, sort of generalities about how was their message clear? Did they have stated objectives? Did they achieve their objectives? So our final forum is tomorrow evening, the parent and community forum tomorrow evening. And the next step is that the committee will send finalist names to the superintendent, Superintendent Burkhead, who will, I believe, interview, plans to interview them next week. So that's the update for that search. And if I may, just ask you to allow me to thank all of the members of the search committee. They've put in lots of good thought and a lot of time and effort into the search and really are invested, testament to how invested they all are in this, for all of the work they did. So it would be Rebecca Long, Lisa McGuire, Rosalyn Kamani, who is the high school guidance counselor, Amy Heffernan, Gates teacher, Jane Flynn, Hatherley teacher, Jonathan Simon, who's a Jenkins school and Metco parent, Michaela Sors, high school students, Dina Dre, Jenkins parent, Karen Barkowski, Hatherley parent and Stride co-chair, Francie Latour, who is the in-class school director of diversity and equity, Nicole Brandalini from our own Situate School Committee, as well as Janice Lynn Wollam from our school committee, Lori Ball from the Situate Concerned Citizen Committee, and then Evan Halevi, high school student, Jaclyn Thornton, who is a high school alumna, Rosemary Tersha, high school student, Amy Pishel, Course Foundation President and parent, and Michelle Crawford, Metco Director and Co-Chair of the Search Committee. I'd like to thank all of those people publicly for everything they've done. I really appreciate all the time they've invested. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold, and thank you and Ms. Crawford for co-chairing a very important committee. I think besides safety, one of the most important things we do is hire great people and keep them. And this process has been very strenuous for the candidates and on purpose. A lot of voices, a lot of people heard. There is a community forum tomorrow, so the school committee are invited to that as well. Let me know if you haven't gotten an invitation to that, but there's an opportunity to listen to each of the finalists and weigh in and take part. So I think we've pretty much included, everybody in our school community has had an opportunity to take part in the process, which we're very proud of. So thank you, Jen, for that. And next, that'll be a good, you know, I know this agenda is jam packed and, but there's so much going on and it's all important. So the next piece, I've asked school nurse leader Kelly Roach to come. And periodically, I think it's important to have Kelly or the MAC Medical Advisory Committee come on and give updates on where we stand with COVID and other health-related issues and items of interest. So I'm going to have Kelly give a brief update for us now, so we're all up to speed on where we stand with our health and wellness. Kelly, do you have something to be?
If you could raise your hand, Kelly.
There we go. Hi, thank you for having me. Thank you Superintendent Burkhead, school committee members. I'll be quick, or try to be quick. I have a couple of things to update you on. First will be town testing and what we've done over the past couple of months. Then an update on the flu vaccine and where we stand as far as a district with the new guidance from the state with the flu vaccine requirement for all school-aged kids. And then just a brief COVID update, and we'll go from there. So with town testing, over the past two months, October, November, we've had two rounds of testing for town employees and school employees. We were able to test 356 employees of the tests that the lab were able to process. That was 352 of them. They were all negative, which is great news. School employees and town employees got results. And the first round was about 24 hours. The second round, due to volume, was a little bit longer, 36 to 48 hours. And that was a really great thing that we were able to offer collaborating with the town. Next round is December. We have three days booked, December 9th, 10th, and 11th. We have about 300 spots. Most of them are full. The turnaround time again will probably be the same, 36 to 48 hours. And we're super happy to be able to offer this to our town and school employees. It's been a really great thing, thanks to Dr. Dutch for organizing it. It's been really great. So that's where we are with testing. Flu vaccine, the state this year has told us that we need to have all school-aged kids vaccinated for a seasonal flu vaccine. And that is something that we're still, have some work to do on that. We have a partnership with the Mass Immunization Information System, which is a website where if your student or your child goes to the pediatrician to get a flu vaccine or any vaccine, it's input into the state immunization databank, which the school nurses can access, which saves parents a lot of time from having to call their pediatrician, get copies, run the copy to the school nurse, or send it or what have you. We've got a lot of information this year this way, which has been great, a great help. But like I said, we do have some work to do. About a third of the high school has yet to give us some documentation for flu vaccine. We're doing a little bit better at Gates and the elementaries, but again, we have some work to do. Outreach has been given with our Thursday Thoughts from individual building nurses, two families, a member of the select board, Mr. Goodrich had reached out and asked if he could help us get that word out, which has been great. And he's going to help us do that. So more work to do, but I feel like we're going to be in good shape by the end of the year, which is when it's required. COVID update, just a little synopsis since when we started. We've had 39 cases total of COVID. 32 have been students, seven have been staff. We have, we did a little, Kim Peters and I did a little math today as far as a two-week positivity rate. And overall, we're at 1.08%, which is a great number, much less than what the town is at now and much less than what the state is at. And how the process works, just a reminder of what goes on when we're notified of a COVID case. So a family notifies their building nurse or myself that there's a positive case. And at that time, as soon as we're notified, we initiate contact tracing. So we help identify any close contacts that were with that person during their infectious period. We notify staff members. We notify the Board of Health, our medical advisory committee, the epidemiologists and DPH and DESI are contact there. And we all work collaboratively to start that contact tracing, work with families, provide guidance, information on what happens next, what happens if you're a close contact and so forth. And they help us every step of the way. We get, we have weekly meetings with MAC. We have, again, daily communication, it seems like these days with epidemiologists, there's all kinds of scenarios that come up that we haven't dealt with before. And they are very responsive, get back to us within an hour or two. And so far, I think we have a good process in place as far as getting information out right away. And that's my 30-second blurb.
Thank you, Kelly. Just to reiterate what I said earlier in the meeting, we do have a plan to activate our Save and Strong Committee, to look at, you know, just assess where we're at now that we have survey results, look at the data, come up with a plan, possibly a phase-in plan and a return to the green plan. So we are thoroughly prepared for full return to school, obviously with all the safety measures that we've been following very strictly to date that have served us well. And that, you know, I like the number that, you know, Kelly shared. You know, I think schools right now are some, you know, our district, I can only speak for our district, is one of the safest places to be. And it's because people are following the rules, people are sharing information, people are working really hard, especially our school nurses and contacting individual families. The amount of calls that go home, just hunting down leads, talking to people, educating people. So, you know, I just asked the community to continue to be responsible because whatever happens outside of the schools is brought into the schools. And so we're doing our part. Our rate is 1.08 in the schools. So I wanted to put people at ease. I know the numbers are up to 2.77, I think, in the town. And the state's 3.6 or something like that, and we're at 1.08. So I think that school positivity number is a huge one when we make decisions to move in any directions. So I think all the work we're doing now and the hard work and safety measures that we've put into place are paying off. And we just let everyone know, I think she will tell everyone with the procedure, but we're just relentless. It's a full-time job and everyone's doing it. Teachers, the bus drivers, the, you know, cafeteria workers, custodians. There's nobody that isn't doing an extra job right now. So it's, it's, it's good to know, just to share with the community that it's paying off. Our kids are safe in our schools and they will continue to do so. And if it's not a safe situation, then we'll take a little break and go remote. We have that capacity because of all the hard work we put in prior to school year in preparation for this. So thank you, Kelly, and for all you've done, and thank you for reporting out. That ends my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions on the committee? Thank you very much. Good stuff. It has on the agenda, assuming it works, a special. Yeah, sorry. Sorry, so you gotta put it at the end.
I told her she'd be on at eight, so. Just kidding.
Sorry.
I did say she didn't have to come in person, so that was a relief, right? Dr. Bogart, driving all the way back to the Cape wouldn't have been fun. Save the best for last.
All right. Yeah, it was bad enough driving at 4:15. It was bad weather today.
Put you at the end of the agenda. That wasn't intentional.
That's okay. I'll try to, my goal is to not let anyone sleep on my watch. That's my goal tonight.
Battery is running low. You got about 15 minutes.
Okay. We need to share this screen. Let me, you know, let me share.
Seth, could you make Michelle a co-host?
I got it.
There you go.
Um, okay. All right.
You're good.
All right, so I'm going to move you out of the way here.
Apologize. Do you need me? Sorry.
I think we're good.
Okay, okay, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Yep, so thanks for having me on tonight at, what is it, 9:50? Okay. No, I'm always happy to talk about special education. It's a subject near and dear to my heart. So I will talk fairly quickly, but, you know, we'll hopefully, any questions I can answer at the end. I just wanted to do a brief overview about what is special education and also kind of comparing it to other kinds of plans. I'm going to share with you some statistics related to the numbers and percentages of students on IEPs in Situate, and then refer to some DESI data collection requirements. And then finally, NWS circuit breaker. So that's my little agenda. So the first thing to keep in mind is that it's required that we have a continuum of plans for students that have suspected disabilities. So rather than going through the whole special ed process, if there is a student that is struggling, the student could be placed on an individual curriculum accommodation plan, which is drawn from the district's curriculum accommodation plan. So you don't need a special evaluation or an identified disability to be put on that kind of a plan. Students that are struggling could also receive response intervention or a multi-tiered system of sports. It's a specific plan that targets interventions for the areas of academic or social, emotional, behavioral needs. Those are done fairly regularly at the elementary levels. But they can also be done at the middle school and high school. And then finally, students who are identified as having a disability may be eligible for a 504 plan or for an IEP. I'm going to explain the next slide, what the differences are between that. But first, just some core beliefs about special education. All IEP students have the right to a free, appropriate, and public education. Before we do any kind of standardized evaluations, provide services, or make placements, we must get parents' consent, or if the student is 18 and over, their consent. We need to have a kind of continuum of services that go anywhere from accommodations, consultation, related services, and specialized instruction. And we also must have a continuum of placements that go from inclusion to pull-out services, to partial inclusion placement, a substantially separate classroom, or to a separate school. All students have the right to attend the least restrictive environment where they can make progress. And we always start at the inclusion. That's the default placement. If we are pulling students out of the inclusion setting in the general ed classroom, we need to explain why they can't make progress in inclusion without support and accommodations. So those are just some kind of core beliefs. The special ed cycle starts with the referral. Anyone can make a referral. And again, if parents or staff are concerned about a student, they don't have to go through special ed. The best bet would probably be to go through your school's counselor or principal and talk about the struggles and see what the school can do through that RTI model first. But once we get the referral for special education, we have 30 days to complete the evaluation. And then we have 45, these are all school days, 45 school days to meet and determine whether that student is eligible. And then we develop the IEP, present that, we look at, after we determine what the student needs, and we talk about where that, those services should happen. That's called the placement. Then we provide specialized instruction. We do progress reports as equal to the amount of times that a student gets a report card. We would also be reporting out on those goals that were developed at the IEP. So that would happen anywhere from two to four times a year. Then a year from the very first meeting, we meet again. We do an inter review. And we kind of go through this process, again, the IEP, the placement, et cetera. And then every three years, we look at, is this, we do more evaluations to determine, is this student still eligible for an IEP? So it's quite the process. And again, there are lots of other things that can be done before we get to that point or instead of that point. So I guess I did miss, I'm sorry. So I was going to show you the slides. Well, I guess I missed that. Didn't make it in my plan about the 504 plan. Just in general, students that have a disability that need accommodations that might be appropriate for a 504 plan, to be eligible for special education. for a 504 plan, to be eligible for special education, you need that specialized instruction that we talked about here, in addition to accommodations. Okay. So in Situate, our statistics, basically, these are numbers I pulled out from the October 1 count. The state has us look at our student enrollment and specialized populations on October 1. So at that point in time, we had 359 students in kindergarten through 12th grade on IEPs in the district. We also had 13 preschool students on IEPs in the district. We had 37 that attended out-of-district schools. This also included two that were in preschool. Most of those students were in private schools, 22, and 14 students attended the collaborative. We provide services for students that are not enrolled, per se, in Situate, but may be attending a private school placed by their parents, such as the Inlee School or private preschools. So that includes 18 students that are eligible for an IEP. And so in total, we have 427 students on IEPs, and that represents 14.5% of students district-wide when we look at our enrollment, which is a good number. Because if you look at the percentages of students on IEPs compared to the state, we are below the state average. The state has roughly 18.2% as of October 1 of this year, and last year was 18.4. We were 14.4. The 2018, 2019 school year, we were 14.2, and the state was about 18.1. It was a little bit of a decrease for Situate in 2017. We were at 13.3. But you can see, we're relatively stable at about 14.5%, and the state is relatively stable at about 18%. The number of students on IEPs per school, I broke it out by the school. So I think I said 12 were in preschool, but probably by the time I did this one, we had another one. It was 13 in preschool at Wampe Tuck at the Early Childhood Center, and also 42 on IEPs for K-5 at Wampe Tuck, at Hatherley, 36 students on IEPs, Jenkins, 39, Cushing, 34, Gates, 88, and High School, 120. That might seem like a lot at the high school, but when you look at the actual student enrollment, it's not. That represents 13% of the high school's enrollment, since they have over 900 students. So the reasons why Wampe Tuck and Hatherley might be a little bit higher than the other schools is that we have some of our specialized programs there. We also have a specialized program at Jenkins as well. I thought that was kind of interesting statistics there. The number of out-of-district placements, again, as of October 1, was 37. This is often a fluid number, because depending on when you capture the data, and it might be a few students that are, they've made plans to be placed out of district, but it hasn't happened yet. Last year was pretty high, and the year before was about 35 for ages 6 to 21, but also, I believe, two more that were in preschool. So it looks like last year might have been a little bit more of an anomaly, why there was more students. When we look at some of the other pieces of work that are involved with the, for the department, one of the things that we have to do is we have to collect a lot of data on timelines, collect data on how preschool children are doing in our program, whether we are meeting timelines for early intervention to special education, position planning, we collect data on physical restraint, significant disproportionality. When I come back, I can probably talk about that. And then Medicaid reimbursement is something that we, we can get reimbursement from Mass Health. It goes directly to the town, but it does, you know, it's a significant amount of money that we work on getting information from. And then finally, Circuit Breaker is a pretty, pretty good program that the Department of Education has put in place, I think probably like 16 years ago, where we are able to get reimbursement for special education costs, because special education is so costly. Not an electrician, but I believe it is related to where you go to the fuse box and you have to, like, hit the breaker. So it tries to allow for some, I guess, equity in covering some of the special education costs. There are some assumptions and some caveats around Circuit Breaker. The first is that, basically, you know, it is a formula-based program. So we go in and we add up all the services that a student might have per week, and then, but there's like a certain cost that the state is providing for us. So for example, if it's a special education teacher, you know, they might say, okay, this is the rate, it's $63 an hour, whether we pay the teacher more or not. So it is a generic way of kind of accounting for the costs. The other thing is, IEPs have to be written a certain way to recoup that funding. Generally, students that are in a substantially separate setting, that get a lot of therapies, that might get one-to-one, paraprofessional, we may be able to claim for them and get funding back. Most students, we do not get the funding back for, and that is basically because the state assumes that we will, we will, like, basically cover the cost of four times the foundation budget amount per child. And this year, that amount was $48,352. So their amounts of their services must equal more than that to be even eligible to get reimbursement. Other factors include cost shares with other districts or cost shares with the Department of Children and Families and State Ward status. So in the custody of DCF, we are able to get a higher reimbursement rate. The percentages of reimbursement vary each year, which makes it very difficult for budgeting, because you never know if you're gonna get 69% or 72% or 75%. It was originally created to get 100% back. That's never happened. Typically, it's about 72% after, again, the foundation amount is taken off the top. So for years, people have been saying, well, you need to add transportation to that, because the special transportation is so expensive. But the problem is, there's only one funding source, so there isn't any big golden pots of money out there. So what they did was, they said that they would, basically, we had to, like, give all the data for that, and then they ultimately declined to fund it, which I'll go over in a second. But basically, here's a hypothetical example. If the amount of money was, the $48,352 was the foundation amount, and say the tuition costs $55,793, we would get back about, that would be the difference, we would claim, but we were only able to get 70% of that money, which equals 5,208. So we might pay $55,793, but we get back about $5,000. This past year, we claimed 43 students. This money comes in throughout this year. However, this year, we're being audited, and so we, even though we're supposed to get $1,106,650, this may change due to the audit. The other thing that Situate does that is smart is that we don't use this money to cover our costs until the following year because of the unknown factor. So a lot of districts that are able to wait that year, then you know how much money we will have to add to the budget, basically. You can see in here that our net costs were about $1,600,000, and the transportation, we claimed for $438,994. They said, oh, well, you're eligible for only $100,000. But then they ultimately decided not to fund transportation this year, so maybe next year. You'll see, there was a jump last year, but if you recall from that slide I showed, there was a big jump in the out-of-districts as well. So it sounds like it's pretty consistent to about a million, you know, a million or so. Since this year, we're gonna get a million 106, and two years ago, a million 106. All right. So just to kind of, I don't want to end with the, talk about the money, because really, you know, special education is, it's more than money. Even though it is costly, it's, there's no, you know, it's such an important cause. But overall, our goals in special education are to do that child find to first identify all students with disabilities who require that specialized instruction, who are then eligible for special education. We want to provide that specialized instruction, the least restricted, least restrictive setting, to ensure that students with disabilities have equitable access and can make effective progress. We also need to recognize that not all students can make that progress within our district. There are going to be certain students that will need out-of-district placements because of their unique needs, and that's okay. And our goal is to, you know, balance any fiscal limitations with making sure we are supporting all of the students in our district. And of course, all our decisions that we make are based on what is best for our students. So I think I got it in in 15 minutes, maybe. So I can just see if you have any questions here.
Rachel, that was much more than 15 minutes. It's okay.
Was it?
Still, still.
18 minutes.
Oh, I was close.
I have to say that that was a really nice presentation, and I think that it's a shame there's only 26 participants here, because I think that it's eye-opening, and it gives a really good overview of all that's involved in special ed. So I appreciate you putting this together, and may have to pull it out in another, you know, next year around this time, too. Maybe at 7:30 instead of 10. Are there any questions on the committee? Questions or comments? Ms. Lindblom.
Thank you, Michelle, for that presentation. I have a question about the students you mentioned that are at private schools but are on IEPs. Do we provide services to those students?
Yes. Mostly, the services are speech and language. In my previous district, we provided reading instruction. I'm not aware that we're doing it in Situate this year. I think we might have last year. But that is, that is kind of an important piece that we, with that child find, we need to find all children that are residents in Situate that might have a disability. Some of the students, they might be attending, like, a private school, a prep school even, or somewhere, maybe not within, you know, kind of commuting to Situate, so they wouldn't, wouldn't be feasible to provide services. But we still need to manage their IEPs, because they're still eligible. And then the other important thing to realize is that we have to reserve a part of our IDEA grant for those students. So it's called proportionate share, and we need to make sure that there's certain money that is going towards those students. So it gets very complicated, but in general, they are accessible, they are eligible for services. We don't go to the school, we don't go to Inlee School and provide it. Usually, it's, you know, parents bringing them for the speech and language.
Okay. And it's just Situate residents, or, because Inlee is in Situate, so.
Right. So it's, again, it's very complicated. They're, like, we, we would, we could provide services to students in Inlee who are not residents of Situate. And the reverse is true. If we have someone that goes to a prep school in a different town, we would evaluate that student to see if they're eligible for an IEP, but then we would ask that town of that school to provide those services. And so we have to, like, collaborate and share, and it gets very complicated.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments from the committee?
Pete, I'd just like to thank Michelle for that report as well. It was a great presentation. Also, probably the best explanation of the Circuit Breaker I've ever heard, so. You know, it's like, yeah, it's like trying to explain the professional sports cap rules, but certainly that was the best explanation I've, and clearest I've heard.
Oh, really? It keeps changing, because the foundation amount was $45,000, and then a month ago, they changed it to, like, 48. So it's, it's a moving target. But in general, that's, yeah, thank you.
But I've always been proud to be, I remember the school committee for a long time, and that led in Situate, I firmly believe, is, has been, always been our moral obligation first, and our legal obligation second. So, and I'm proud to, has done that.
That's nice.
Thank you. I said, again, a great presentation. I don't want to put you on the spot, Michelle, but I'm just, just, I would just be curious, there is, as you noted, there's a big drop in out-of-district from last year to this year. I would just, it's an interesting tidbit. And if it's, if it's, if it's accurate, I think that it's, that it's great news that we're potentially able to provide those services in district, but.
I do have a theory behind that, and I think that, you know, I was looking at the October 1 count, so the school year is still early. Last year, I looked at, like, any student the entire year, so if that makes sense. So, like, I would have looked at, you know, July, you know, June 30th, any student that was in an out-of-district program, including, like, a 45-day placement, that might have returned to the district. So I'm not exactly comparing, like, apples to, you know, apples to apples. So, but I think it'll be lower than it was last year overall, I hope. Yeah.
No, thank you. That's been a, obviously, it's an important number, and we would love to be able to provide services.
Well, the other thing, too, is I was talking to Superintendent Burkhead, is that, you know, I'm really impressed with the quality of our services and programs here, and our staffing here. And, you know, I stand behind that. We have really, really well-programmed, you know, good programs here for students, and our staff have really good expertise and certifications. And you don't always get that in private schools. So, you know, I stand, stand behind that, too. And as I'm learning more and more about our, what we have to offer here, I think it's excellent. So hopefully, you know, parents will agree, and the kids will make progress, which is the most important thing.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments on the committee? If not, I'm gonna open up the public comment, and I did receive an email, I think this is the first, an email from a viewer, either for you, Michelle, or you Superintendent Burkhead. I'm just gonna read it verbatim. It's Erin Sweeney, 9 Connehasset Road. What is the plan for the district to begin prioritizing moderate-needs special ed education, middle school students to return to school four days a week? Neither of you could comment on that?
Well, I think that, you know, we want to, but it's, again, is, it has to do with the, being able to maintain the distance. And I think Bill said we were gonna be, the first part was the survey, and then trying to regroup the Safe and Strong Committee back. and then trying to regroup the Safe and Strong Committee back. The middle, the middle school and high school, just because of the nature of the classes, they weren't able to bring as many, you know, the moderate disability, students with moderate disabilities back as the elementary were, just the way that the schedule worked out, and the class sizes and everything, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Otherwise, we're gonna get ready to wrap this meeting up. Alright, seeing none. Thank you again, Michelle, that was a great report. Appreciate it. Alright, we're gonna move on. Minutes, do we have any minutes? Just one from August. What's that? One minute. August twenty-fourth. Any kind of motion? To approve the August twenty-fourth, the school committee meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, I miss Brandon Leeny. Roll call vote, eight, yes.
Yes.
Ace.
Yes.
Brandon Leeny.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Minutes are passed unanimously. We have no correspondence, we have no warrants. I don't believe, no other business. Future agenda, I would just start school committee goal that I will work on by then. Other than that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at ten seventeen.
So moved.
Move, Mr. Hayes, second by Mr. Long. Roll call vote, yes, Brandon Leeny.
Yes.
Lindblom.
Yes.
Long.
Yes.
Ace. You're muted, but yes. Adjourn, ten seventeen, thank you. Take care.